The time is six o'clock PM. This meeting of the Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order. We will forego the invocation at this moment as our invited guest to deliver the invocation is en route. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Our community unfortunately has lost a great many of our neighbors and so I will read the names and then we'll proceed with the moment of silence. Victims of the house fire yesterday morning on St. Clair Street, Shawn Alexander, Martha Blom, George Bryant, Logan Cannon, Brenda Evans, Alice Vanny Gooding, Lydia Gutierrez, Ruth Hanley, Willis Marcus Henderson, Alice Holmes, Charles Dempsey Jefferson Jr., Ethel Lavalley Strazeki, Richard Mick McKinn Sr., Gary Moore, Rosie Pearl Moore Hollins, Milagros Millie Nieves, George Newt Northern, Lorenzo Page, A.B. Bunk Roberts, Mike Seager, Robert Terrell, Mary Elizabeth Thompson, Joyce Pooh Pooh Webb, Early Wilson, and Patricia Wright, as well as any of those neighbors and loved ones who you have lost in recent days. Ladies and gentlemen, please, a moment of silence. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Present.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a call.
Thank you. All members present and voting, we move now to, is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I make the motion to approve this evening's agenda.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. So with that motion before us, could I please have a motion to amend the agenda to add a special presentation just before recognition of elected officials? That special presentation being from Waterford Regional Fire Department on the residential house fire at 821 St. Clair Street.
So moved.
A support.
That motion to amend the agenda has been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. Any discussion, oh, with no discussion on that motion to amend the agenda, roll call on that particular amendment, which is adding a special presentation, inserting that special presentation.
James.
Thank you.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
Thank you. We're now to the main motion. Are there any more changes or questions to the main motion, the agenda as amended? Hearing no further amendments or discussion on the motion to approve this evening's agenda as amended, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're now at a special presentation. I'd like to bring up Fire Chief Covey and his team for a brief update to the community, bearing in mind that it is an active investigation underway, so we recognize that there might be some sensitive information that can't be divulged, but since it's a matter of safety and well-being for this neighborhood and our community, you have the floor, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Matt Covey, your Fire Chief, probably servant for the last three years as chief. Previously said I was your deputy chief and prior to that, your fire marshal. I'm sad to report that we lost two of our Pontiac residents yesterday in the early mornings to a house fire on St. Clair Street. The house was used as a halfway house for people that had been incarcerated and according to Mike Wilson, our building official, the house was supposed to be considered a rental home with at least five, no more than five occupants. Sadly, the house is being used again as a halfway house with eight people living in it. There was actually 11 people during the fire. The fire came in approximately 2:44, 41 hours. Fire crews were dispatched to a house fire. Engine Six, which our Walton Boulevard Fire Station, was first to arrive roughly four minutes and 45 seconds later. We dumped all four Pontiac Fire Stations that included the Pontiac District Units of Engine Seven, Squad Nine, Cap Seven, and Truck Eight. They were all there within a minute of the original crews' arrival. The house is a two-story home that was, again, was being used as a halfway home for men that were on parole, occupied by eight tenants. The building was a total, a two-story building of 3,036 square feet of living space with three additional occupants who were in the home at the time of the fire. Upon arrival, our Engine Six was faced with multiple injured residents and reports of two missing occupants within the structure. I did attach a picture, which sadly, you people in the audience are not going to be able to see, but it shows you what was on arrival when our crews got to the scene. The fire crews faced heavy fire conditions, limited access, as the stairs to the second story had failed during the fire. Fire crews laddered the building to gain access to the second-story rooms, attempting to rescue occupants and to extinguish the fire, while additional crews were working on the first floor to search for occupants. The condition of the building and heavy fire conditions really hindered the ability to try to save the two occupants that were inside the structure. Again, fire crews from all four Pontiac District Fire Stations were called to the scene, including Waterford District Units, including another, Second Command Unit, an ambulance from the Waterford District, two additional fire engines from the Waterford District, the deputy chief who's standing behind me on my left, myself, our fire marshal, and fire inspector, putting a total of 19 personnel on scene. There's several major factors that played a really bad scenario into this scene, and I think it's very important for us to understand what those are. Several of the occupants were forced to open second-story windows to escape. There was no early warning for this fire other than someone screaming "Fire" laid into the fire. Openings like windows and doors play a significant role in how fire spreads. That's why they suggest people sleep with their doors shut, keep windows closed, those type of things. By allowing fire gases heat and fire to easily extend throughout the structure, allows the air to move at a greater rate and allows the fire to spread. Also, a 10 to 15 mile per hour wind accelerated the fire growth. It is in our belief that based on the first arriving fire unit report, witness statements, the Olton County Sheriff Investigator and my fire marshal's group are still interviewing people. We still have people that are injured, but they're still gaining information as we speak today. They were working right up until we left tonight on this fire still today. That, and the percentage of the fire involvement, the fire was fully involved. If you see that picture, fully involved means every window, fire was blowing out of the windows upon our arrival. And there was a really important point, is there's a significant delay in a call for 911. And that being that everybody was awakened from their sleep to a fire and they left what they had on themselves. Whatever they were dressed in, they left the structure. So most of the people didn't bring their phones, those type of things. It took two gentlemen going next door to the house next door, beating on the door. I just found out this just prior to leaving tonight from our investigators, where they went next door to call 911. And tragically, talking to the lady that called 911 first, she said the whole first floor of the structure was on fire, meaning fire coming out of all the windows, and she knew that the back part of the building had the only exit out of the building, and that was fully engulfed in flames, where she had witnessed other people jumping from the structure. We did have mutual aid coverage. We pride ourselves in being part of what's called Oakway. I'd be glad to sit down and spend some time with the board to explain what Oakway is, but it's 10, the 10 largest fire departments in Olton County mutually together, and we had Bloomfield Township, our neighboring partners, come help protect the city of Pontiac residents while we were tied up at this fire. They sent four personnel over here to assist us that evening. Star ambulance transported at least four persons, or four people to our local hospitals. One victim sadly was transferred to Detroit Receiving Hospital Burn Unit, is in grave condition. Hopefully, we get some good news and some positive out of this in the days coming forward. Two others transported themselves via personal vehicle for medical treatment. And again, sadly, standing here is your Fire Chief. I just, I'm tore up over a fire like this. I hate, you know, just, we lost two residents. We lost two Michigan residents, two Pontiac residents, two Olton County residents, and probably brothers, uncles, you know, to someone, you know, some mother got a phone call that she never wanted to have. Again, my Fire Marshal Division, along with Olton County Sheriff's Office, Fire Investigative Unit, are currently investigating the cause of the events that led to this fire. There'll be more information that comes out as time goes forward, and I'll definitely keep the mayor's office and the council president and our, and Mrs. Rutherford comprised of those events so we can share with the group. If you see the picture that's attached, I know the people in the audience don't have it, but you can see the, what our crews had when they arrived. And again, we had a great response time, but we had a huge delay in people calling 911. The house sits in an area, there's not a lot of traffic right there at Kennett, and by the old power plant that was torn down at GM, it sits pretty hidden. And, you know, sadly, it wasn't, the first 911 call was when the two gentlemen jumped out of the second-story window and went and knocked on the neighbor's door for help. She said on the phone conversation I listened to that she couldn't even see the two people standing there, there was so much smoke. So she's been through a horrific event herself and she was glad, we're glad that we were able to talk to her and get some information. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer what I can. Again, it's still under investigation.
Thank you. Mayor Grimald, I'd like to give you the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Thank you, Chief, for your call to me yesterday morning about this, and thank you for being at tonight's meeting at my request. I appreciate you being here. This is a horrible, tragic loss of life, and I know that my heartfelt condolences go out to those who were in the fire, as well as those who lost loved ones in the fire. And I know that all of us here in the city of Pontiac are mourning right now because of the loss of life and the ongoing suffering of the one individual who's still in the hospital burn unit. You know, I want to say a few things publicly about this, which is, number one, as has been mentioned, this was an unregistered halfway house that had too many occupants in it in violation of city code. There are likely some additional code violations. It really underscores what we had already started working on in the past two weeks since I took office, which is beefing up code enforcement, particularly when it comes to cracking down on unregistered halfway houses. And we need your help as a community to do that. So I implore you, if you know of halfway houses in your neighborhood, please let us know about them so that we can make sure that they're operating in compliance with city code and that they're actually registered, if they're required to be registered. We don't always know where people are operating halfway houses, especially with large numbers of tenants, and I encourage you, you probably won't know whether they're registered or not, but please just inform us of who's operating in your neighborhood, and we will take it from there and look into whether or not they're registered so that we can crack down on those who are flouting city ordinances and city regulations. You can email me directly with any information about those operating halfway houses in your neighborhood. My email is T, as in the first initial for Tim, T. Grimald, G.R.E.I.M.E.L. So T.G.R.E.I.M.E.L. at pontiac.m.i.us. This also underscores the need for us to put in place an ordinance better regulating these transient housing places. We had one on the books once upon a time, and the emergency manager eliminated it. We had already started talking internally about working on putting back in place an ordinance to regulate these places. I know that they're often problematic for neighborhoods anyway, even aside from this horrible tragedy, and this just underscores the need to better regulate them. So please, let us know about halfway houses operating in your neighborhood so that we can properly regulate them, inspect them, and make sure they're complying with city ordinances. The other thing I'll say is that the investigation is ongoing, but it seems likely that this building was not complying with various fire safety requirements as well. And I pledge to you that we will do everything we can to hold the owner accountable for any and all malfeasance and misfeasance that he's responsible for that led to this fire and this tragic loss of life. This personally angers me. I know it upsets not just me, but everyone in this community, and we will do everything that we can, everything in our power, to crack down on those who are jeopardizing the health and safety of Pontiac residents.
Can I make one more comment, too?
Yes, please.
I 100% agree with the mayor's comments on this. I think it's something that definitely needs to be addressed, add a greater notion. I would love to help work on that with the city. But I'd like to say, too, I can't say enough about my fire crews that were out there that night. The Pontiac District, the Waterford District firefighters came out there, they risked everything to save a lot. When I say a lot, that's a life. They took things to the extreme, to the point where they couldn't go any farther. And to see the look on their face and see how they feel, I know deputy chiefs spent a long time with them, and they're at loss for words. You know, unsafe structures lead to dangers for my firefighters. And I don't, you know, I don't want a resident to suffer, and I also don't want my firefighters to suffer. I don't ever want to make that phone call to a loved one that one of my firefighters has lost their life or injured. And when you have stuff like this, and the mayor's comprised of some more stuff, you know, regarding this fire, and it frustrates me, too.
Thank you. Those colleagues that wish to have the floor? Councilman Goodman, then Councilwoman Rutherford.
So, the hardest part about this is like that is in what is now my district. And I did drive past the structure yesterday morning after receiving information from President and Pro Tem regarding it. And like Tim pointed out, there is a part of this that extremely angers me. I mean, I'm sitting here seething at the moment, and one of the questions I have to ask, you know, regarding this is, when it comes to transient halfway houses, and the housing of people who may not be considered by society to be the best deserve just as much protection and care as the rest of us expect. One of the questions I have is, what things, if, is known right now exacerbated the situation? Because I mean, like, for example, like, from what I'm seeing, this is a, this is a multifamily housing situation, correct?
Correct. There was eight bedrooms there in that structure. Correct.
So, shouldn't housing like this have a, perhaps a fire escape from a second story?
Depending on the size and the travel distance, that is correct. This structure, I can tell you, at one time did have a fire escape, and it was not there yesterday, or this morning, or yesterday, yesterday's, Monday morning, excuse me.
So that just brings me to like just a thought of, why was it not there? Especially when the person who owns the structure knows how many occupants are in there, the situation that many of them are in, and also just the added danger that comes with having that many people, whether or not they should have been there, not based on their, you know, own choosing, but of the person who runs the building. So, like, I have many, many concerns about this, and of course, many other structures in the city of Pontiac with how, how many houses, halfway houses, normal houses, places that people are renting, so on and so forth, that are in similar situations to this, that are essentially a tinderbox waiting to go up, and they've just been, you know, set aside for people who have no other options? And I guess the question, point that I'm trying to get to is, how many things made the situation much worse than it needed to be? Especially, you know, given the situation that you and your men had to go through?
So, being a smaller investigation, I have some limited conversation that I can have here, but I can tell you that not one individual reported being woken up by a smoke detector. The only known working smoke detector we know in the structure was in the basement, because my firefighters during their investigation heard the smoke detector in the basement going off. But out of 11, well, I shouldn't say 11, nine people that have been able to be interviewed, not one reported a working smoke detector in that structure. That, to me, is one smoke, working smoke detector in a house reduces your risk of dying by 50% in a fire, and to have one in the basement? I can't tell you what's there because it's, the damage is so bad if there were ones that were there, but not one person reported that. If that many people were in a structure, you'd think somebody would have heard a smoke detector. And there's a potential that we're still looking into a potential double-keyed deadbolt door that led to the front porch on the second story, meaning that there's a key on the inside that's required to open it, and that is not code compliant. But we're still looking at that because of the damage and looking into that.
Thank you. For any other questions? Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford, and then Councilman Nicholson.
I just wanted to personally thank you for the swiftness in returning the phone calls, as well as making, keeping us informed and engaged. I think it's important that the citizens know that you guys are on the job, so I personally want to thank you and for the call, because I couldn't get there, but luckily, one of my colleagues was there. But I just want to know, is there a way for us to try to help the people who have been affected by the fire? Is there like a call and response? Is there any information on what they may need? Because even though these are people who are just entering society, they're going to still need those reinforcements around. So do you have anything or a way for us to be able to support them at this time?
I know the deputy from the sheriff's office that's involved with it has the list of people that were involved. I will reach out to them tomorrow and get back with you on that. I know that they're working with some parole agents to find them another place to stay, that type of stuff. I know our fire union, I'm proud to say that our fire union tries to help out fire victims. They keep gift cards. I mean, it's a little bit, but a little bit can go a long way when you don't even have a toothbrush, you don't have a t-shirt, you don't have a pair of sweatpants or shoes. It's something they've done for years. I've been on the fire service for 27 years full-time. The union's been doing it since then. When Waterford and Pontiac became one in 2012, that carried over into Pontiac, our command trucks carry gift cards, and that's a great avenue. If anyone ever wants to donate to our local union, that's a great avenue to donate to our charities. It's all run through the charities, and they buy those gift cards. They try to do $100 gift cards or at least $50, but, you know, like, last night, one lady left in a t-shirt. You know, I mean, it was cold, and, you know, so our union tries to do that. I couldn't be more proud of the union and their giving back to the communities, and they do it all the time, but that's huge. I mean, if anyone ever wants to donate to the union, that's something that gets handed right there on the scene to get that start. I don't believe the Red Cross was called in on this because so many people were hospitalized and others had places to go. Carl, was that?
Yeah, so we didn't have all the information of who was actually tenants because they were already transported. Right away, we had so many victims that were, you know, spread out, and we transported everyone right away, or they went by themselves. So everyone was basically at a hospital. So until today, when we got the list from the sheriff's department, we really didn't have an exact name. When we tried to interview on scene, because their situation is parolees, you know, some of them didn't want to, you know, give any information about the other people. So it was kind of hard for us to get a count initially. So, you know, it went from 11 to eight, you know, it kind of fluctuated, but we got the complete list from the, not the owner, but the person that is running the facility, who was there. So we're good now. But we do have it, I just don't have it with me.
All right. Thank you so much.
Councilman Nicholson, and then Councilman Parker.
Thank you. Again, none of us, than I'm aware, well, many of us actually did, but you, more than most, know what it's like to come to work every day and risk your own life. That's incredibly, it's just, for me, it's unbelievable. I have a question, are there, and again, you know this better than any of us, this isn't an isolated situation of people living multi-unit or multi, so many people packed into one house. And in this situation, it sounds like there may be a known owner or operator of this, of this home, but in many situations, there's not, or the person lives out of state, which we saw with the home on University and Woodward that was populated primarily by homeless residents. Are there creative things that other cities are doing, like giving away fire alarms or smoke detectors? Or how, what are some of the creative things that we could be doing to?
Smoke detector drives are great. Like I said, one smoke detector in a house reduces your risk of dying by 50%. We do carry them on our engines, so if our guys, our crews go out to a scene or a house and there's alarm or, you know, beep chirping, they'll replace the smoke detector, give them out. We get those through donations. Our local board up companies supply those. Michigan's, State of Michigan Fire Marshal's group has some grants where they'll give those out. We apply for them every year. You hopefully get some. The Red Wings typically give some out. We try to keep them with us. We have residents that show up at the station, if we have them, we give them to them. They technically don't meet code because they're a battery-operated smoke detector, but the code now says a 10-year lithium-ion battery. But like I said, that one working smoke detector is a temporary fix to help residents out is a great thing.
Apart from your stations, are there, do you know of these drives happening in the city?
I do not at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, the Red Cross did one a few years ago, two years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Council President. Certainly, we all are mourning for those who have lost their lives and those who are still battling for their lives and those who are homeless at this point in time. And I was listening that you said that it was an unregistered halfway house. There was some issues with code enforcement, but can you share, when was the last fire inspection?
There is not one documented for that.
Not one documented?
No. If it was a rental, like a residential rental, we would not, but if it's a halfway house, if it was notified to the city it was a halfway house, we'd be invited out with building and public safety downstairs.
Okay. So it would be a part of code enforcement?
It'd be part of the building.
Building and fire safety?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman James.
Yes, I would like to, in answer to Councilman Rutherford's concerns, there are some efforts underway to be able to help the men that lived in that house. We are still working on the coordination, but James McQueen at Lighthouse and Rahim Harris, who works with Pontiac United Crimes, are partnering together to try to establish Lighthouse as a place where people can take donations. And so there will be information being released, but yes, we are, there is a need for donations. These are men who were in transition, and there's just a tremendous need. So we will be asking the community to come together around help for these individuals, and there will be announcements of how they can go about doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to have the floor? Councilman Goodman, for a second time?
One final question, now that I'm able to focus a little bit more. Was there any damage to any neighboring structures?
If you look at that picture, you can see just to the bottom left, there is a neighboring structure, there was damage to the exterior. Our fire crews were able to stop the fire from, you know, making it into the structure, but there is damage to that house, yes.
Any, like, I guess, measure of how significant? From, from, from?
There's a lot of heat and smoke, heat and fire damage to the side of the house. There's a lot of heat and smoke, heat and fire damage to the side of the house because it was so close relationship to that other structure. So it's significant. I gladly share some pictures if it helps you tomorrow. I can send some pictures out to the council.
Absolutely. I would greatly appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, thank you for this special presentation and providing the briefings to the mayor and the council on this active item. Can I please have a motion to suspend the rules for us to reorder the agenda for invocation to take place right now?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington that we suspend the rules for the purpose of invoking the invocation. Hearing no discussion on that motion to suspend, roll call Mr. Clerk.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six days, no less.
With that, we now proceed with invocation. I'd like to give the floor to Councilman Brett Nicholson to introduce our guest for this evening's invocation. As you might have deduced from recent meetings and this evening, we are rotating amongst the seven council members for those who will preside at the invocation so that we can lift up the diverse and dynamic voices throughout our community and our very diverse religious community in the city of Pontiac. Councilman Nicholson, you have the floor.
Thank you. For those that may not be aware, Pontiac historically was home to two historic schools or places of worship for Jews. And in our, in our community, we have roughly 200 people of Jewish heritage. So tonight, I've invited Rabbi Levy Dubov from the Bloomfield Hills Chabad.
So with that, yes, to the, to the diocese, sir, the floor is yours and feel free to negotiate with the microphone and stand so it works best for you. Thank you for being with us this evening.
You hear me, one, two? All right. Sovereign of the world, look favorably upon the mayor and the honorable members of this city council, of this great city of Pontiac, and bestow upon them the joy of life, good health, and prosperity. Bless these distinguished individuals who have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the citizens of this city with wisdom and understanding in their noble pursuit of justice and equality. Give them guidance so that they will always be conscious of your presence and will strive to enact laws with honesty and integrity in accordance with your will. Grant them the wisdom to turn adversity into opportunity and to transform the hard challenges we all face today into the seeds from which will sprout the growth of tomorrow. May this city serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths and walks of life. May Pontiac help achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our pledge of allegiance so that America is truly one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And let us say, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We now proceed with recognition of elected officials. I see we have a former county, school, and city officials, so I want to give a shout out to the Honorable Brenda Cossey Mitchell, Robert Bass, Alex Shorter, and thank you for your, your past service to the community. Are there any current elected officials that wish to have the floor? With that, we move now to agenda address. Mr. Clerk, were there any requests this evening?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now at resolution supporting Webster School National Historic Designation. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution supporting that?
To approve?
Support Carrington.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington to approve this resolution. And with that, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the language of this resolution?
Pontiac City Council Resolution Supporting Webster School National Historic Designation. Whereas the city of Pontiac, Michigan, has through the centuries been home to many noteworthy structures with various residential, commercial, industrial, and civic purposes, whereas many Pontiac civic structures, including school buildings, have been architecturally and culturally significant landmarks for past and present city residents that enhance our quality of life. Whereas Elmer R. Webster School located at 640 West Tiran Street in Pontiac was constructed in 1920 and 1921 by the school district of the city of Pontiac as an ecclesiastically stunning structure that incorporated many educational design innovations and has been prominent in our city for a century. Whereas, among other noteworthy historical contributions, Webster School is one of the few remaining sites that were a focus of the successful federal lawsuit filed against the school district to rectify decades of administrative racial segregation of both schoolchildren and staff members and ensuring national significant policies employed to integrate students of this school and surrounding schools. Whereas many beloved significant buildings in our city have been demolished through the decades and since its closure in 2006, Webster School has been vacant, damaged, vulnerable, sold by the school district, had ownership changed multiple times, and is now held by Micah Six Community nonprofit organization that is working to redevelop the site into the Webster Community Center. Whereas Hopkins Burns Design Studio has conducted through research on Webster School and has nominated the site to the National Register of Historic Places, which is the official list of places worthy of historic preservation in the United States through the National Park Service. Whereas the Michigan State Historic Preservation Review Board will be considering nine sites throughout the state that have been nominated for addition to the National Register of Historic Places through the Webster nomination at their January 2022 board meeting. Therefore, be resolved that the Pontiac City Council strongly affirms that the Elmer R. Webster School is a site of local, state, and national historic significance worthy of preservation and further resolve that the city council advocates for the Michigan State Historic Preservation Review Board to favorably consider Webster School's nomination to the National Register of Historic Places and further resolve that the city council encourages our city to consider the substantial value to our quality of life and economic development potential when we proactively preserve our noteworthy sites and further resolve that the city council requests that the organizations pursuing renovation of the Webster School's structure and its repurposing as the Webster Community Center shares updates with the city on their progress of this challenging worthwhile endeavor. Pontiac City Council, Pontiac, Michigan, January 18th, 2022.
Thank you. I'll open the speaker's list, but I'll first turn the floor over to Councilman Brett Nicholson, whose District Two includes this historic site.
Thank you, Council President. This is a project that's been going for quite some time and this, this design studio is notable for their historic renovations. So, and from what I've seen so far, the intention for preservation and restoration of this building is exactly on par. However, this opportunity, you know, if any site is designated as a historic place or structure, that really gives then us the opportunity to hold them accountable for such restorations. As it is today, of course, that you have the normal process of going through planning and coming to the, the city council, but this adds an extra layer of oversight. So that, to me, is something that's very encouraging, especially where we've seen many of our school structures not go in this direction and are sitting vacant or have been rehabilitated in ways that are not historically relevant. So that is something that I wanted to put out onto the table also, to say that this process in this, in giving this resolution, if it is passed this evening, essentially is, is to say that we support it. It's not to redistrict in any fashion. It's simply to say that this is something that we, we like and we would like to see happen. Anybody owning these structures or any other place of historical relevance could absolutely go through the same process, make that application, take that application, its full route is an expensive process. So thank you for all of those that have sought it before. We have some amazing landmarks in our city and I'd like to see a lot more and I'm, will offer my assistance in any way that I can in fulfilling those, those contracts and making those applications.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Council President. Certainly, I appreciate the fact that they want to make this into a National Historic Designation, but I do have a couple of questions. One, did it go through planning? Anybody here? Tell me if it went through planning already?
I can answer that question in a different way. This is for the National Register of Historic Places. So this is something that the National Park Service maintains this list nationally. Pontiac currently has 17 sites that are on this National Register. And when you're thinking about the big metal signs that say something's historic, that's actually a state historic site, so we're not even referencing that. There are 81 throughout Oakland County, many more throughout the rest of Michigan. And the last time that a site from Pontiac was added to the National Register of Historic Places was in 2000. It's the Gillespie Street Bridge over the Clinton River, but most of them are from the 1970s or 1980s that they added, the very historic sites. So this is not rendering a verdict on any potential future reuse of the building. This is sort of saying that for this nationally significant site, the city council also recognizes its historical importance. And I know that as a member of this council, I will be very aggressively lobbying for additional Pontiac sites to be encouraged to pursue this as well because there are many very important sites in Pontiac's history that we, we've already lost or are very vulnerable, but that benefit from this National Historic Designation. So this resolution is not rendering any verdict on any proposal or reuse of the building that would come through to planning and, and the proper processes for the city. Does that answer the question, sir?
Partially.
Okay. You still have the floor?
Well, as I was listening, and certainly, I, I certainly am not as familiar with the historical sites as you are, for the president, but I certainly know that, as I was thinking, because we toured one with the transportation building that has a, that had a school in it, and is that one on the listing? That school?
Currently, the new Crowfoot School built in 1973 is not on any local, state, or national historic designation. The original Crowfoot School that was sadly demolished in the 1970s sure should have been, but that's gone. You still have the floor?
And so, and you've already stated that since this is just us saying that we're okay with it, it doesn't adjust any zoning requirements?
No, not at all.
Okay. I guess those are all my questions at the present time.
Sure. You can claim the floor again. Councilwoman Rutherford?
Good evening. I fully support this whole idea. Micah Six is a, is a fighter in our community. I've watched some feed, Families Weekly. I've also watched them put in the work and not just do the talk, they do the work. And so I fully support this and whatever I can do to assist you, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. President Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor?
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'd just like to commend you taking a step, and this is not an easy process. It's very expensive. So I want the community to know just how expensive this process is. And actually, like Councilwoman Nichols stated, this actually put a layer of, of regulation on this particular building. Most nonprofits wouldn't even think about doing this because it's very expensive. So I, I definitely echo Councilwoman Rutherford. I've seen your work. I've been to the garden on numerous occasions during the summer. We, and I love what you're doing on that side of town, so I can certainly support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to the, one of the gentlemen involved with the Micah Six community that currently holds this property, and so you were active with the National Historic Landmark Application, if you will. So you have the floor, Mr. Coleman Yocum.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me and thank you so much for considering this resolution. This really does, you know, this is a culmination of a lot of work, a lot of time spent in the archives in Lansing, reading old school board meeting minutes and trying to track down screenshots of things on microfilm and microfiche and spending a lot of time, you know, climbing around in weird places in that building. For anybody who's been in the Webster School building, you know that it is a beautiful building. It was built to last, which at the time was incredibly frustrating for the school district as it more than doubled the budget given to the architect builder who built it, but it is in the details. It is in beautiful terrazzo floors. It is in the woodwork. It is in these red granite bathrooms that are just, you walk in and you, you know, you know that this was made and built with care. If you read the school board meeting minutes at the time, the school board was freaking out because the architect builder was spending so much money on a number of the details for that building, so much so that when the building opened, the school board president stood up in front of everyone and said, if our city is going to be judged based on our school buildings, I don't think we have anything to worry about. And it has held. A lot of those details are still there and that's why it was very important to us to preserve them. That was incredibly important to us. As soon as we walked in, we said, this building needs to stay looking like this building. It is also one of the few remaining sites in the city that was involved in school integration in the early 70s in this city, and it was a site of busing, it was a site of protests. And I am originally from my home from years and years ago, it was Little Rock, Arkansas. We have the School Segregation Museum in Little Rock, Arkansas, and if you walk into that museum, there is a room that says, "The Struggle for Integration Nationwide," and there's a picture of Webster on the wall. The National Historic Registry and the National Historic Parks people have already given this building a nod as an important place in the conversation for school integration in this country, and it's time to get recognized. And so that's what we have put together, an application to be recognized for its historical significance, both architecturally as well as culturally for this country. So that is what is in the application and that is what we are applying to have recognized on January 28th. I'm also here, and if you want to know more about plans, I guess we can talk about that, but I'm also here with Madonna Van Fossen, who's one of our board members here at Micah Six Community. She works for SMART. She's your community ombudsman and is a, SMART is a big partner and a big helper in this project as well. So I want to give a shout out to her.
Thank you very much. Councilman Nicholson for a second time?
Thank you. So apart from the scrutiny that this will bring in the process, right? So you'll have the historic district commission potentially, you'll have the requirements of the state and federal registers, you'll have our planning commission, you'll have our zoning ordinances and everything that will happen with the school in the future. And apart from the recognition alone, what are the benefits that this would bring to, to this revitalization?
Sure. So a portion of it is the potential for funding through historical tax credits. That is, that because it is a historical building now, we can access different pots of state and federal dollars that will help us to, you know, complete this renovation. It all, it puts us on the list of National Historic Places, and so if you are a National Historic Places nerd who, you know, is going to a new city or a new area and looks at the list to find out what historic spots are near you, then that, you know, Webster will be on that list and that brings people to the city, that brings interest and activity and tourism to the city. And I think because of, because of its relation and its place in the history of school integration, I think that that'll bring a number of people to the community to see that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Further, yes, Councilwoman James, you have the floor?
Yes. First of all, I want to say I commend you and I am in total support of what you guys is doing. This is definitely the direction that we want to see us go to take advantage of the tremendous historical presence that Pontiac has. I'd also would like to ask you, is the plan to preserve a part of the, I know you're, you want to make a community center there, is the plan that you, you want to preserve some of the classroom kinds of things as well as creating new areas?
Sure. So part of, I'll walk you through some of the things that we've agreed to as part of this designation on, on our historical status. We have to restore a number of elements in that building to look the way that they looked when they were built in 1920. So that includes, you know, if anybody went to school in 1920, that includes, the ceiling on the gym was originally glass, so we have to put a glass ceiling back on the gym. We have to do our best to restore a number of interior architectural elements, including skylights that were originally there that got covered up for energy efficiency reasons later on. That includes things like trying to match the That includes things like trying to match the pigment of paint to what it originally was. It means putting in windows that are fabricated to either look incredibly historical or are like the original windows. And so we're giving up a number of design elements that we probably really like or that we probably really prefer in order to go back to looking historical. One of the things that they are very strict about is that this building is this building. So we cannot knock walls out between rooms and open those spaces up. We cannot add anything onto the building historically. In fact, there is a chimney on that building that was added to give a little bit of elevation for the boilers and the sort of venting the boilers. We have to bring that back down to its original height. So there is a lot of, it's restoring the building historically. It's not adding to. It is just really, it's going to look like the building that people went to school in when they were there. So you'll be able to walk through. You'll be able to find your classroom. We have to keep transom windows that have room numbers on them.
Yeah, that was really my question. Are you going to utilize it as like a tour building facility? Or are you going to use it as a community center? In other words, where people are actually...
Sure. It will be a community center. So it is 53,000 square feet. We did a large neighborhood survey of people in our community about two years ago where we just asked people what they wanted to see. How important was it to them to keep the building? Do they, you know, would they care if we knocked it down and built something else? Do they, you know, the name Webster, I mean, it's going to be the Webster Community Center, because that is something that means a lot to the people in our community. And we asked a lot about the services and activities that people wanted to see in that building. And so once we had that survey data, we surveyed about 300 people. We threw out any response from anyone who lived more than a mile from the building. So we got down to about 225. And then we took that information and we went and found organizations who would want to be tenants in that building. So today, we have 100% of our space committed with six organizations on a waiting list. And that includes OLSA putting in a number of Head Start classrooms and a WIC office. Honor Community Health is going to put in a walk-in clinic. Sprout, our produce store, is going to move in there and expand and become a small grocery. Organizations like Accent Pontiac, Kaleo Kids, Pontiac Theater Four, The Art Experience, all planning on moving in and making Webster their home.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Since there's community interest, I want to very rapidly share, these are the current places in Pontiac, Michigan that are on the National Register of Historic Places. These items are from District One. The Pontiac Commercial Historic District, aka Downtown. They expanded those boundaries five years later in the late 80s. The Eagle Theater, Today Electricity Nightclub. Franklin Boulevard Historic District. That Gillespie Street Clinton River Bridge I shared. Grinnell Brothers Music House, previously was Tonic nightclub, but it was a music store back in the day. The Myrick Palmer House on Huron and St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Church. From District Two, Casa Del Rey Apartments and Eastern Michigan Asylum District. So those are the two currently in District Two. One of them's been empty for a long time. The others demolished. But this would be the third addition for District Three, or excuse me, District Two. Hailing from District Three is the Governor Moses Wisner House. And in District Six, we've got the Fair Grove Avenue Historic District, the GM Modern Housing Neighborhood, the Horatio Howard House, that beautiful old one that's on North Saginaw. And then Oak Hill Cemetery straddles District Six and Seven. And also in District Seven, across the street from us, the Central Schoolhouse, which has been vacant for nearly 40 years and is across the street from my house. So what we'd be saying here is that we, as a council, agree in sentiment that this is another noteworthy site that should be added to that, that it has national architectural and cultural significance. And this doesn't limit us or the community. So there are other noteworthy sites that could be pursued in the future, and we are eager for that. And we will issue similar such resolutions of support for those grassroots efforts. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion on the motion of the resolution supporting Webster School National Historic Designation, roll call Mr. Clerk.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
I abstain based on my longstanding relationship with Coleman, but I do privately support this effort.
Six yeas, one abstention.
That motion carries. We look forward to hearing positive news continue forth. We're now at the resolution calling for consideration of expanded recycling opportunities for citizens. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Support Carrington.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by President Protam Carrington. Now that we have that motion before us, could you please read the resolution, Mr. Clerk?
Pontiac City Council Resolution: Consideration of Expanded Recycling Opportunities for Pontiac Residents. Whereas the city of Pontiac, Michigan strives to provide multiple services available to Pontiac residents to improve their quality of life and to facilitate cleaner Pontiac neighborhoods. Whereas the city contracts with service providers and governmental agencies for various sanitation, recycling, hazardous waste removal, and other environmental needs. Whereas through those contracted services, Pontiac residents are afforded the ongoing opportunity to drop off their recyclable materials every weekend at the Pontiac City Hall parking lot. Whereas in past years, the one large recycling receptacle placed at the City Hall parking lot would very quickly be filled with residents' recyclable materials, severely limiting the number of residents who were able to utilize that drop-off recycling service. Whereas within the past two years, it has been expanded to two large recycling receptacles placed at the City Hall parking lot each weekend, which was a very helpful accommodation for residents. Through those, two receptacles are often fully utilized, even with ongoing service rarely being communicated to the city's residents. Whereas Pontiac contracted services in recent years have also included other subscription or complimentary recycling options for Pontiac residents in recent years, the offering of which was determined in large part by the financial resources of our municipal government. Now therefore be resolved that the Pontiac City Council calls for the consideration by the city of Pontiac's new mayor and administration for future expanded recycling opportunities for Pontiac residents as the municipal government's financial resources allow. And further resolve that the city council encourages the new mayor and administration to consider the short-term possibility of increasing the number of recycling receptacles at City Hall parking lot or other strategic locations in our city, depending on the cost implications with the contracted service provider and logistical considerations of site locations. And further resolve that the Pontiac, further resolve that the city council requests from the new mayor and administration that the status of the current recycling opportunities be verified, that they be updated on the city's website to reflect the current status, and that they be communicated more broadly throughout the year with Pontiac residents. Pontiac City Council, Pontiac, Michigan, January 18, 2022.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? Councilman Nicholson.
I want to just say, I think this is so important. Our private opportunities are not good enough. I constantly am hearing from people about recycling needs. And based on our, you know, longstanding relationship with regular trash pickup, it's been a high time that recycling is thought of. My only question, my only hope is that when we are considering recycling companies to work with, that they are vetted for how much they actually do recycle. It's our intention to recycle if we do implement a plan like this. And simply contracting with whom might be our current provider for trash pickup may not be the best option based on the amount and percentage in which they actually recycle the items that are picked up. So just something to keep in mind in our hopes for expanding recycling opportunities.
Councilwoman James, and then Mayor Grimal.
I would like to say that I really like this resolution. I think it's just the beginning. Because I would love to see the city of Pontiac really develop a state-of-the-art recycling program that envies anyone in Oakland County, anyone in the state of Michigan. Recycling is not going to go away. We need to get better at it as individual families and as cities, as states, as nations. So I am very happy to see this. I also want to say that particularly for seniors, you know, this resolution talks about the two recycling bins that are in the parking lot of City Hall. But often, it's difficult for seniors, who have limited mobility, some of them, to be able to get out, get their recycling stuff in their cars, and then get it to City Hall, and then to be able to get them into those bins. So ideally, we really want to see recycling happening at the home. And I would love to see us expand that program to make it more affordable for every Pontiac resident. So I think this is a great beginning, Mr. President. But I definitely want to see recycling expanded in the city of Pontiac and would love to see recycling, our recycling program, be a real model. Thank you.
Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of updates. One is that we have begun a comprehensive review of our contract with GFL, not just when it, as it pertains to recycling, but as it pertains to a number of provisions in that contract, including the frequency of pickup, the frequency of special pickups. So we're looking through the contract with GFL and looking at opportunities to potentially improve that contract. That contract does not expire for some time, but there may be an opportunity to modify or improve certain provisions of that contract through amending the existing agreement. The other thing I would note is that there is an effort on the part of a number of North Oakland County communities to at least begin looking into the feasibility of creating a recycling consortium here in North Oakland County between a number of communities. One of the things that I did my very first week in office is signed a letter supporting looking into that, along with a number of other chief executives of other municipalities in North Oakland County. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean it is the right approach, but we want to do our due diligence and gather the relevant facts, both in terms of what that would mean, potentially in terms of service improvements. But we also have to be mindful of cost implications, either to the city or to individual residents. So I've simply asked for additional information about that. As we get additional information about that, as other communities get information about that, we'll obviously be keeping city council informed as those items progress. But at this point, we're just simply seeking additional information so that we have a better sense of what our options are and what might be in the best interest of residents.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Goodman?
I'm just going to, you know, support and reaffirm what both my colleagues have said as well. I'd say that this is a first step of many when it comes to how we handle our environmental impact, especially as a municipality, especially in a state and an area where like our survival historically has been directly correlated with how well we work with our environment as well as protect it. So this is an amazing first step. And with that being said, it's still a first step. And there are many other things that we have to do beyond this if we're going to attempt to truly protect our environment and actually, you know, recycle and do things properly.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal, that's very exciting news to hear, the prospect. And I respect that you'll safeguard our resources and the personnel power of our direct and contracted employees. But South Oakland County, or SACRA, has a recycling authority. And I don't even want to, I don't want to butcher their acronym, but where they pool their needs together in the southeastern section of our county. And there seems to be expanded recycling opportunities for their residents as a result. So there is some model in our region that might benefit our central and northern Oakland County neighbors, but most importantly, could benefit us. So I'm glad to hear that's a prospect and that our neighbors are also receptive to exploring that prospect. Mayor Grimal.
And you drew the right analogy with SACRA. So this is really an exploration as to the feasibility, the cost implications, and whether it makes sense or not to pursue a NACRA, a North Oakland version of this South Oakland consortium.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? A final point, we intentionally included language in this resolution that respects the fact that this is just a few days into the mayor's administration, and he's doing an excellent job of hitting the ground running. But we acknowledge that there is time that's necessary to learn more about the moving parts and what maneuverability we have with our limited resources. So we intentionally, as a council, wanted to be flexible in our language. One item in this resolution does call for greater clarity on the city's website and how we communicate to our residents about what are our current opportunities for recycling. And, you know, as is expanded, let's be, you know, expanding and communicating that to our residents. Because if you go to the city's website right now, it doesn't even necessarily reflect how we actually are operating. Because as somebody who does take recycled material to the City Hall parking lot every weekend, it's actually there much longer than the very limited timeframe that's posted on the city's website. So just want to flag that as an internal matter for you. And with that, Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Suffice it to say that this particular issue is just the tip of the iceberg of improvements that need to be made to the website. So we're very much aware of the need to improve the website. You know, this is day 14 or 15 of the administration. But we're going to be doing a comprehensive revamping of our website to make it more user-friendly and to convey more information, but also more accurate and up-to-date information. So couldn't agree with you more. But this is simply one of many examples of the need to improve the city's website.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, speaker's list has expired. And Mr. Clerk, roll call on the approval of resolution calling for consideration of expanded recycling opportunities for citizens.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no names.
That motion carries. We are now at a resolution encouraging coordinated community cleanups. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Support Carrington.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford and seconded by President Protam Carrington to approve the resolution encouraging coordinated community cleanups. With that, if you could please read the resolution, Mr. Clerk.
Pontiac City Council Resolution: Encouraging Coordinated Community Cleanups. Whereas the city of Pontiac, Michigan recognizes that the quality of life of our residents is dramatically improved when we have a cleaner Pontiac neighborhoods and cleaner Pontiac parks. Whereas the city contracts with service providers and governmental agencies for various sanitation, recycling, hazardous waste removal, and other environmental needs, and is still overcoming systemic municipal finance limitations to deliver the maintenance and enhancement of our public parks and other public spaces that we desire to provide for our residents. Whereas through the initiative of dedicated residents, business owners, nonprofit organizations, congregations, fraternities, sororities, students, and many others, many of our city public spaces have been cared for and cleaned throughout the year. Whereas in recent years, multiple community cleanups often are concentrated in the months of April and May each year and have been able to garner continued volunteer support. Whereas there is an emerging effort by community organizations to strategically coordinate cleanup activities, including by the Friends of Pontiac Parks and the Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership. Whereas we can make a more pronounced positive impact when we coordinate our volunteer efforts as a community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pontiac City Council encourages interested Pontiac residents, business owners, nonprofit organizations, congregations, fraternities, sororities, students, elected officials, and the city of Pontiac Municipal Government to begin planning for coordinated cleanup efforts this April and May, as well as throughout the entire year. And further resolve that the council commits to partner with community organizations interested in coordinating cleanup efforts in our parks, in our neighborhoods, and along our corridors. And further resolve that the Pontiac, further resolve that the council requests that interested residents and organizations express their interest in participating in coordinated cleanups to our city council offices. And further resolve that the Pontiac requests the new mayor and administration assess the municipal resources for services that can be made available to bolster these coordinated community cleanup efforts. And further resolve that the Pontiac City Council celebrates the commitment, dedication, creativity, generosity of the Pontiac residents who have voluntarily labored to clean our city parks and neighborhoods. Pontiac City Council, Pontiac, Michigan, January 18, 2022.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
This is such a near and dear thing to my heart. I was inspired especially by the Crestwood and Astrowood Estate Blight Club, how they each year they do a cleanup and how the parks do a cleanup. I think this is going to change the way we deal with blight in our community, especially in my district. And I ask for more... And I ask for more contents of it. It absolutely gives each individual community group a easier, I want to say, more transparency, if you will, for us to get this done and to make our city look better. So I am looking forward to this happening. I think it's a great thing, and I thank you for this, President.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? I just want to share that the Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership, Dr. Semino Scott and Anisha Hannah have shared with us, there is a target for Earth Day, which is April 22, a Friday this year, as well as for May 7, if I'm remembering correctly, which is a Saturday, so sort of like a backup rain day, but also a round two of cleanup fun, that we are putting the call out to our neighbors, friends, and Pontiac allies. If you have an inkling and if you've got some spare time and energy, we are throwing down the gauntlet that, just as we have in previous years, let's do it even more resoundingly that we organize coordinated cleanups in all corners of our community. This city council, the mayor and his administration are here to help provide resources and coordination to make those even more effective. And it's also intentionally timed because that's the time of year when Pontiac residents have free access at scheduled weekends to dumping of larger items at the city's dump, for lack of a more pretty word, so the city's dump. But I just want to have those gears turning now so that way we can plan accordingly, and you can let us know of your interest. Even if you've just got a cluster of neighbors on your street, give us a call at the city council so we can kind of have that info, and then we can connect you with maybe a larger effort. If General Motors has got some employees, but they don't have a project, we can try and help connect those dots, as will these nonprofit organizations that have already begun to reach out to us. So that's the gist of this resolution. We want to get this on your radar early so that way it can have a more dramatic positive impact in our neighborhoods, in our parks, and along the commercial corridors that so many people unfairly and inaccurately judge us as a community based on how our thorough fares and our busiest road arteries look. And I'm so grateful, I know I'm speaking for everyone on this council, I'm so grateful for the work that everyone on this dais, in this audience, and in the active members of our community have done, because you have been holding the line. When the city's resources and departments were being hallowed out and couldn't fulfill those basic services, you were holding the line so that things didn't spiral out of control further for those residents here and those who live, work, and play in Pontiac. So God bless you for that. Other colleagues that wish to have the floor?
And across the dais also to you, many times I've called you, and you've been mowing vacant lots and picking up garbage across the city, more so than anybody I've personally met. So that thank you extends to you as well.
Thank you. And knock on wood, I've never broken an ankle yet. Hearing no further discussion on this motion to approve a resolution encouraging coordinated community cleanups, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Thank you. We're now at the resolution to approve the appointment of Councilman William Parker Jr. as a trustee to the Pontiac General Employees Retirement System Board. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford and seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. Let the record reflect, they've been very swift on the moving and the seconding. I'm noticing.
I tried.
Now that it's been properly moved and seconded, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the language of the resolution?
Resolution to approve the designation of Councilman William Parker Jr. as the city council representative to the City of Pontiac General Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. Whereas the Pontiac City Council selects a member of its council to serve as a trustee of the City of Pontiac General Employees Retirement System and the City of Pontiac Reestablished General Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. And whereas then Councilwoman Patrice Waterman served as a GERS Board trustee on behalf of the Pontiac City Council during her tenure and previous sessions of the city council, but her term on the Pontiac City Council has now ended. And whereas the current Pontiac City Council is committed to continuing the active participation and hard work demonstrated by former Councilwoman Waterman on the GERS Board, now therefore be it resolved that the Pontiac City Council designates Pontiac City Councilman William Parker Jr. to serve as a trustee on the City of Pontiac General Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees and the City of Pontiac Reestablished General Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. And further resolve, we acknowledge the effective service of the Honorable Patrice Waterman on behalf of the previous Pontiac City Council sessions on the City of Pontiac GERS Board.
Thank you. I'd like to give the floor to Councilman William Parker Jr. to see if he has one last opportunity to tell us to go jump in a lake. What do you say?
No, sir. First, thank you, Brother President. I am honored to even be considered for this position. One of the things I, as I've attended council meetings and watched Councilman Waterman, I know this was her labor of love. I know that she put her heart and soul into this. And I said, if there was any way that I could assist and make sure that this goes to the way it's supposed to go, then I would certainly volunteer my time, my energy, and my effort to do so.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? On the note of celebrating the previous Councilwoman Patrice Waterman, it's her birthday week, and you know, every year she would normally let you know that it was her birthday. So in her honor, Councilwoman Rutherford, I and the whole council say happy birthday to Councilwoman Emeritus Patrice Waterman.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this motion?
I'm just so excited to see.
Yes, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, sir. Thank you, President. I'm just so excited to see you, Councilperson Parker, and I've seen you here doing the legwork, understanding what the GERS mean and the importance that it is to our retirees. I think that we are in good hands with this gentleman.
I agree.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, speaker's list exhausted. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Oh, yes.
Rutherford.
With that, I have to say that serving on a board and commission for the city of Pontiac looks good on you. You both look very youthful. You look younger than when I've seen you last. Let's give a standing ovation for our Board of Review public servants. Thank you.[169.62][169.62](APPLAUSE). And fellow neighbors and residents of Pontiac, if you want to be celebrated by your city government and your neighbors, consider boards and commissions. The mayor and his office makes a number of different appointments. You can pursue those application forms on the city's website. And we look forward to more of our neighbors rolling up their sleeves and make our community even stronger. Bless you for your service. With that, we're now at a resolution to approve the 2022 NOHAS interlocal agreement. That motion and second was made at last week's meeting, but it was postponed, so no need to make a new motion. So with that, the matter is before us now. Is there further discussion? Want to give the floor to Mayor Administration first.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. At the last city council meeting, a councilperson asked a question about whether this might be a multi-year contract instead of a one-year contract. I'd like to invite our Acting Director of DPW, Al Cooley, to the podium to answer the question. He's been in touch with some people from Oakland County.
Good evening, Council. Yes, I reached out to Oakland County, to our partners there. This is the last year of the contract with the vendor that does the work for the NOHAS. And speaking with her today, she said that was something that we would talk about when they look to the future contract to try to make it multiple years versus doing a resolution every year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Mayor and Administration? With that, further discussion from colleagues. Hearing nothing further, we have before us approval of the resolution to approve the 2022 NOHAS interlocal agreement. And for the community, that's how we handle the disposal of hazardous waste for you, by you, our residents. And this resolution language continues the tradition of not charging Pontiac residents for that service. And that's the intention of this council. So, Mr. Clerk, can you please do roll call on the resolution to approve this interlocal agreement?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are now at resolution to approve a one-year contract extension with Waterford Regional Fire Department. This has also been properly moved and seconded at last week's meeting, but postponed for additional research, review, and deliberation. I'll give the floor now to Mayor Administration.
Thank you again, Mr. President. As I explained at last week's meeting, the intent here is to extend the Waterford Fire Contract for one year. We remain committed to doing our due diligence and doing a comprehensive analysis of our options for providing fire service to the community. That could mean a number of different things. But the current contract expires at the end of January. That does not afford, obviously, enough time to do that analysis or implement any changes before the end of this contract. So, in conversation with Waterford Fire Department and the Township of Waterford, we've arranged for this one-year contract extension so that we can properly do our due diligence about our long-term options for providing fire service to the community. There was a question at last week's council meeting by a councilperson who asked about who's responsible for maintaining fire stations, particularly those that are not utilized by Waterford's Fire Department. All five of the fire stations in the city were leased to, I don't think that's my phone, happily.
Is that your ring, though?
It's similar to my ring, but I don't think that's my phone. So, all five fire stations located in the city of Pontiac were leased to the Township of Waterford for purposes of use by the fire department there. And under that contract, Waterford was originally, this is the original contract signed in 2012, was responsible for mowing the grass, plowing the snow, and other forms of day-to-day maintenance of all five fire stations, regardless of whether or not they utilize them. However, in 2014, there was an amendment made to that contract, so going back seven years ago now, that provided that at fire station number two on South Boulevard, which is not utilized by the Waterford Fire Department for the provision of fire services, that the city at the time, apparently, and I believe this is still the case, had a need to store a couple of vehicles there. And that amendment allowed the city of Pontiac to store a couple of vehicles there in exchange for the city of Pontiac paying for utilities there and plowing the snow there. However, Waterford is still responsible for mowing the grass there, and to my knowledge, has continued to do so. So that's the answer to the question that was raised at the last council meeting.
Thank you. Colleagues that wish to have the floor? Councilman Nicholson?
Is there any, I think my question was more about the physical plant, like, is the nature of the lease triple net? Is it the, you know, the HVAC, the roof, the integrity of the structure? Just because, I mean, in passing, driving by some of these structures and knowing that they're not utilized, they do seem somewhat dated. I can't imagine that they've been reconstructed at any point in the recent few.
The terms of the lease are ambiguous about that. The terms of the lease do not explicitly speak to who's responsible for capital improvements to the facilities, things like major investments, like HVAC investments. There's, so there's some ambiguity about that. Having said that, it has been the practice for the city as the owner of those fire stations to make large capital improvements to those fire stations. That has been past practice. We're looking at what our options are moving forward, but that has been past practice since this fire contract and lease were entered into back in 2012.
Thank you. Other colleagues? Hearing no further discussion, we proceed, the speaker's list exhausted, we proceed to roll call on the resolution, approval of the resolution to approve a one-year contract extension with Waterford Regional Fire Department. Roll call, bless you. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. If there's no objection, I'd like to offer the opportunity for Finance Director Carrington or for Chief Covey and team, if any parting reflections. Since you're up there by the dais, make the most of it.
Again, Matt Covey, I'll take this down so you can see me. Matt Covey, your current fire chief. I look forward to working with the council on a future long-term contract to make sure that we're benefiting all the Pontiac residents, the Lake Angeles residents and the Waterford residents, as a team. And I hope you take that seriously. I look forward to working with you to resolve a long-term contract or partnership with the city to provide the best service for everybody. We have some big challenges ahead of us. I mean, the city of Pontiac continues to grow. I see great things happening, United Wholesale Mortgage, Williams International, some big companies coming back, and we have growth. So we're going to have to expand as that growth happens. I'd love to see South Boulevard's fire station open up in the near future. I would also like to see our ISO rating go from a three to a two. Very, very important for large companies. As a chief, that's one of my major goals that I've set with my staff, is working to get into a ISO rating of two. We're still a three, which is a good thing. Ten being the worst, if you have a ten, you probably don't have a fire department. A three is a very, very good score. A two is better, obviously, but there's only one Class I Fire Department in the state of Michigan currently, and that's Grand Rapids. So I look forward to working at that, on that goal this year, and hopefully into the future. Yeah, so ISO is your insurance rating, I'm sorry. I'm speaking fire language, but ISO is your insurance rating. As you look at your insurance for your home or your business, you'll see an ISO classification on there, and your fire coverage part of your insurance is tied to that ISO number. So if you talk to any of your insurance agents, they should be able to understand what that ISO rating is.
Thank you. Hearing nothing further, thank you for being here this evening and available to answer questions as they arose. We're now at a resolution to approve Amendment Number Two of the City of Pontiac Declaratory Trust Agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
I make the support.
Councilwoman Parker was a bit swifter on it, and so seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. Now that it's properly moved and seconded, want to give the floor to the administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to hand the floor to our Finance Director, Darren Carrington, who will talk about the nature of this proposal, but it's really about changing the notice period for the new VIBA that will be administering retiree health care, the notice period for special meetings. So, without further ado, Mr. Carrington.
Good evening, Council. As the mayor indicated, this is a special, this is an amendment tied specifically to special notices. It's a very narrow amendment. I also want to point out, we do have, and this is for the city's VIBA, the City of Pontiac's VIBA trust, that was formed recently specifically for the purpose of providing health care benefits to eligible retirees. We do have the council for the VIBA. Attorney Matt Henze is here to ask, answer any questions that the council may have. But just to give you, again, a brief overview, this is specifically dealing with the issue of special meetings. Currently, the agreement or the documents that govern the VIBA call for a five-day notice for special meetings. We would request through this amendment that that, the notice requirement be reduced to be in line with the State Open Meetings Act. And it would give the VIBA the opportunity to call special meetings on a shorter timeline. Right now, the VIBA is in a very crucial position as we, the VIBA is finalizing the benefits for the retirees that will be receiving them, and there's possibility of just needing to be able to call special meetings on a fairly short notice. So just wanted to give you that overview. Again, Attorney Matt Henze is here, and I'm going to turn it over to him to, if he has any additional comments or needs to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. The way that the VIBA trust works now, if you notice a meeting on Monday, you're really not going to meet until the following Monday. We are at a critical point in time where benefits are set to commence February 1. It's been a long time coming. I'm thrilled that we're at this point. And especially in the next few months, we may be at a point where a service provider like Blue Cross, or a custodian bank, or just members may have issues that require time-sensitive, time is of the essence replies. And we will need to act nimbly to address those in short order. And so that's why this was unanimously approved by the VIBA and the CIPRIA Board and the city, and we ask for you to concur.
Thank you. Questions and discussion from colleagues? Councilwoman James, and then Councilman Nicholson.
Yes, when will this take effect?
Well, your amendment will take effect, effective today.
Great.
Receive the other approvals.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson.
So, I'll be honest, occasionally, I'm a human resource professional, so I understand the swiftness that's needed in some of these decisions. I, though, have a thoughtful eye for our retirees. How are we contacting them to give notice of these short notice decisions and special meetings?
Well, all meetings are posted on the city's website. The administrator also maintains a website, and then we post it here at City Hall.
Are all of the retirees, to your knowledge, aware of those posting requirements and where those postings go?
I can't answer that. There are different communications that are sent specifically to VIBA members from the VIBA Board mailed by its administrator, but we do not mail notices of meetings to each of the retiree members.
I, one last question. In this, if this resolution passes, will this be communicated to all VIBA members that this is a possible situation?
We will.
Okay. How would that be communicated to them?
By mass mailing through the third-party administrator.
Mailing, post mailing?
Post mailing.
Okay. Just a comment, I'd encourage any during discussion for the purpose, that this is a matter for discussion, likely will be tabled. Any retirees that are present to voice their opinion on this matter, so we can understand your, at a public comment. Thank you.
Mayor Grimal.
Well, I, this really isn't pertinent exactly to this agenda item, but I do just want to let folks know that I have an announcement that I'll be making under my closing comments about the status of putting back in place reinstating retiree health care for city retirees. And Matt alluded to that a little bit, but I'll be providing more detail during my closing comments. So I just wanted to mention that because I'm sure people are eager to hear some good news for a change.
Thank you, sir. This would bring this back in alignment with the State Open Meetings Act requirement, essentially the same boundaries that we place on ourselves as a public body, that the school board has on itself and other public entities in the state of Michigan. So I think it's appropriate and would not be undermining the public's ability to participate, engage, and offer their feedback at this, at this particular forum. But I do want to get a sense from my colleagues, the council for the VIBA has expressed that there might be some time sensitivity in the coming days, not even necessarily the coming months. So there might be some, if there's general consensus that this is the approach we would like to take with making this, approving this amendment that, that their board has sort of ratifying and corresponding with what they've done. If our intention is to go there anyway, might there be a consensus for us to do that today, so that way this body has the ability to maneuver for what may come, multiple special meetings? Yes?
Is there a parliamentary procedure to suspend the rules to allow public comment on one particular matter?
Well, that's an interesting question. We have in our rules Agenda Address, meaning that if any resident, and this is a helpful time because we haven't really labored into it, and it's not actively utilized too much right now. But Agenda Address would be if Citizen A wanted to weigh in on that, meaning they wanted us to hear where they stood before we voted, that is their opportunity, and we encourage you through the clerk's office to say, "I'd like to speak on this particular item of business." So that way, we hear it preemptively, not when necessarily public comment may happen during the course of a meeting. So that's true for this and any other items. That is the purpose and nature of Agenda Address. If, if there's a, I don't want to open too much of Pandora's Box, but I'm not opposed if there is somebody that signed up for public comment and not aware of the Agenda Address opportunity, that we could allow that, which would then facilitate us.
I only ask for that special consideration to be made because there was a shortness of agenda packets available at the beginning of the meeting. So I wanted to make sure if there's any retirees that wish to make any comment or have any concerns on this matter, that they give the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow for Agenda Address of this particular motion?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we suspend the rules to facilitate Agenda Address opportunity prior to us voting on this particular item. Roll call, roll call, Mr. Clerk on that motion to suspend the rules.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
All right. With that, I'll open an opportunity for members from the public who are here who would like to speak specifically, address this item on the agenda. Anyone that would wish to speak to resolution to approve Amendment Number Two of the City of Pontiac Declaratory Trust Agreement. Linda D. Watson, you have the floor.
I also happen to be on the VIBA Board, and there is a need to have special meeting because we're in the beginning stages of eligibility. And people may question, and we have to respond in a timely manner to their inquiries. So I think we, I'm in support of this.
Thank you for that. Other members of the public that wish to speak on this item on the agenda? Hearing no further, citizens that wish to speak, we are, thank you very much, Councilman Nicholson, for ensuring that the public's voice is heard in this time-sensitive deliberation. Other members of the body that wish to be recognized? Hearing no further, oh, Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
Well, I'm certainly in support of this, this resolution. I just, but I think there was an issue that how do we get all the information to all the guys? And I'm certain that we may not be able to do a mass movement to everybody, but we certainly should be able to do a mailing or something, some way to contact all of the committee members, so that they know when there is a meeting coming up. So I would hope that we would exercise our due diligence to make sure that piece of this gets done appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Hearing no further discussion, speaker's list being exhausted. We now are at the resolution to approve Amendment Number Two of the City of Pontiac Declaratory Trust Agreement. There's no motion to postpone, so we're moving now on action. So roll call on approval of that resolution, Mr. Clerk.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, colleagues, for considering that time-sensitive matter. I think we've done the right thing, and so please, Council Henze and VIBA member Watson, share that with your colleagues and stakeholders. We're now at item number nine of the agenda, resolution to approve purchase of Microsoft 365 solution and associated costs. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been, well, there was a move and a move, so I'm going to say moved by Councilwoman Rutherford and seconded by Councilwoman Parker. So that item before us, we turn it over to administration and council. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We have been using here at City Hall, and by we, I mean employees, a outdated version of Microsoft Outlook. That has inhibited the collaborative work environment that we wish to foster here at City Hall. This is a proposal to obtain and upgrade a new Microsoft program, Microsoft Outlook 365, which is important both to better enable collaborative work via email and online communications between employees, but also ultimately will be essential if we're to continue to have updates and servicing provided by Microsoft Outlook. We're some ways away from running up against that wall, but that day will eventually come. It will also help us better communicate with people outside of City Hall that have the more up-to-date version of Microsoft Outlook that we're seeking to upgrade to. Having said all that, we're always very budget-conscious, and we are seeking to see if we can pay for this through some kind of grant arrangement from an outside foundation. We've also reached out to Microsoft to see if they might either donate the upgrade to us or provide an upgrade for a discount. So we are specifically asking city council not to vote on this this evening, because we want to give this some time to see if we're able to obtain some funds to either partially or entirely defray the cost of this to the city. And we don't want to jeopardize that by having city council move ahead prematurely before we're able to fully explore those options. Whenever possible, my administration is going to seek to obtain outside grant dollars and outside funds to pay for as many things as we can, and this is one example of that. So I wanted to put it on your agenda so that you're given timely notice of this being under consideration and certainly provide you with an opportunity to comment on it or provide discussion about it. But I am specifically asking for you not to vote on it quite yet. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman.
I can keep it really short. As a now-formally certified IT professional, this is a much-needed thing that needs to happen in City Hall. So I express my wholehearted support for this. There are a lot of things that need to happen to modernize information technology in City Hall, and being the chair of the Community Engagement Operations, which does include information technology, I wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Hearing no further discussion, is there a motion to postpone for one week?
It's moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford, that we postpone for one week. So that would be at our next meeting, FYI, we meet every Tuesday, same time, same place, God willing. So with that, any discussion on the motion to postpone for one week? Hearing no discussion, roll call on that postponement, Mr. Clerk.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion to postpone carries. We now are at public comment. Mr. President, pro temp Carrington, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. We first have Mr. Robert Bass for public comment, and Lord Garrity, Lord Gary on deck.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Bass, and president of the Community Citizen District Council located in District One. It's really an introduction of us to the new council people, and I like to say welcome, and we're glad to have you onboard. What the Citizen District Council is challenged with is three areas, which is community development, economic development, and redevelopment. And we'll see how that aligns. We were extricated from a lot of information that usually is shared with associations and Citizen District Councils by the last administration and some council folks. So a lot of information was not being passed down or shared. So what we did, we collaborated with all the block clubs and associations in our area, and we have eight organizations that are under our auspices, and we all work collaboratively together to share information, not only with each other, but with the public at large. That means the whole city, not just those within our district, because we have two other districts that work with us. So I just wanted to come and introduce ourselves and give our thanks to the mayor for being at our January 8th meeting, Council, County Commissioner Powell, and Councilwoman Rutherford, and also State Representative Carter, and past Councilman Carter. So also, I want to do a shout-out to the Crestwood and Ashwood Associate Block Club So also, I want to do a shout-out to the Crestwood and Ashwood Association Block Club for their meeting that they had this past Thursday, which is always interesting. And if you have the time or you have the inclination, please feel free to join into those meetings. They're very interesting and very proficient. So our thanks to Mr. Quincy Stewart and also Mr. Charles Renfro, leaders of that organization. And with that, I'll say thank you and good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Lloyd, well, I appreciate all the hard work you're doing. And I'm sorry for all the loss of life, but I don't know what else to say about loss of life. I'm speechless on that. I get too emotional in that issue. Appreciate the manhole covers and all the hard work for the parks and all the hard work you're going to put into the parks. I'm going to do everything I can to help. But I still got issues with the woods that the guy cut down. And I was going to ask, can I make a path through there? I'll pay for it myself. Or I'll build it, or I'll make it, or whatever. Just slowly moving along. But I am going to, I am going to go through the paperwork and the archives and the library, through the archives and the library, find out why did I had to go through so much work in order to replace? Because down in the archives, downstairs in 1200 Building, there was no such thing as the property down there. They couldn't find it upstairs, so I had to go over to the other place, come back, bring all the paperwork to the 1200 Building, bring it back downstairs, get the archives straightened around. Got all the paperwork and everybody straightened around. People I talked to say, I don't know why you're worrying about it. It's not, it's not, nothing. I go, okay. So I can clear five acres of property, all the woods, and put up all kinds of signs, beware a dog, target to practice, shoot guns at a deer. Every now and then, you can hear it in the house, pop, pop, pop. And I'm like, well, I don't know if that's him, or the guy down the road. So, but I appreciate it. I'll do what I can, promise nothing. I'm slow. I'm not the smartest person, but I try. I keep pushing along. That's it for me, boys.
Mr. Chuck Johnson and Blair McGowan on deck.
Thank you very much and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience and those of you at home watching by television. Chair, I wonder if I could have one minute to ask a question before you start my time because it's important as it relates to the city business. If a person is making a comment, would they, under Robert's rules, be allowed to have at least one minute to complete their comment? If the person asked for that one minute?
Mr. Johnson, the only individual that I'd be able to recognize with a motion would be a member of the elected body, or the clerk or mayor. So in terms of those motions or parliamentary procedure, and our rules and procedures do state, and I'm violating them, that we are not able to interrupt public comment, meaning it is the community's time. So we welcome those questions, but this wouldn't be the format for it. But for the sake of your clarifying question, I'm going to reset.
Thank you very much for resetting my time. A lot of things that was talked about here on this meeting this evening is very much important to me. First thing I want to say implicitly that we, as citizens in this community, we need to move the comment period to the top of the agenda. And I'm hopeful that all you folk in this room that speaks at this mic or that your councilperson know that we don't want to sit here until the end of the council meeting to speak on what we have to offer. I think we're entitled to be moved to the top of the agenda. And that's all I'm going to say on that. But I will be mentioning it every week that I come to this mic so that hopefully, this, and this respectfully to the council, that you will do this for the people, for the citizens. As it relates to the fire situation up on St. Clair Street, you know, I picked this document up. I don't know if the clerk knows where it came from, but I picked it up last year somewhere here in City Hall. I don't know who put it out, but it's a very important document. And I think if the council don't have this, and a lot of citizens don't have it, you should get this, if it came from you, clerk. You should get this, look at it and read it. Because a lot of information in here, and I'll give you an example. Item number 21 on here, there's about 30 pieces. Item 21, halfway houses. See, we're plagued with halfway houses in this city. And they're being packed out by those individuals who, all they care about is an almighty dollar and nothing else. These houses are very much unsafe, and we need to look at that. Now, I don't have anything against the Hispanic community, but in the summertime, when the contractors hire the workers that come into the state, these residential homes are packed out with 10 and 15 individuals. They sleep on the floor, they sleep on the bed, wherever they can get. And I think this is where, Mayor, that the city needs to look at and put some teeth into this and try and stop that kind of action because it's just another tragedy to happen. I'm reminded, over the years, as I did demolition work for 41 years, and I've had some occasions where I had to go into a building and get a dead person out. Matter of fact, it was on four different occasions. Chief Lansum appointed me as the designated person in the demolition to try and assist them. And it's not, it's not something that you want to see. I had people in the closet trying to hide from the fire that froze to death or either died from inhalation of the smoke. But we need to put more teeth into our building department
Mr. Johnson.
and our inspectors, and we need to hire some more people, Mayor. And I'll volunteer for that.
That concludes your time.
Thank you very much.
Blair McGowan, One South Saginaw Street. Mr. President, Council, Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. The Profoot has closed down for the month because of COVID. We had been passing this flyer out since November, and this flyer announces the Kresge Artists Fellowship. The Kresge Foundation is giving out $10,000, $25,000 awards and $25,000 Gilda Awards, and it's for artists. And we have artists in Pontiac. We've been passing this flyer out, and the deadline to submit is Thursday. So if you're listening to this, remind people, you can look at it online, and it's for, what Kresge does is, one year they do graphic arts, the next year they do performing arts. And this is the year they give prizes to performing artists in two categories. Live arts, which includes dance, choreography, theater directing, playwriting, performing art, and interdisciplinary art. And also film and music. Film directing, screenwriting, animation, music composition, music performance, sound art, and interdisciplinary work. It would be great to have a Pontiac resident win one of these prizes. You get the money, there's no strings attached, and you get support in developing a career, finding a marketplace for your art, and networking with other artists. It's open to people that live in Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County. Look at it online. It's a tremendous opportunity. It'd be a great honor to have one of our local artists win this prize. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Mr. Quincy Stewart and then Kenny Anderson on deck.
You know, you might want, before you start the call, you might want to get the one that they used to have where it was kind of, it sits here. This is, this mic is a trip. Okay. All right. Tonight, I'd like to echo Chuck Johnson's comments last week when he suggested that public comment might be pulled, pushed up further in the agenda for the following reasons. Concerns broached at the beginning of the meeting by citizens could help drive any summative discussions during the meeting. Number two, due to how lengthy some of these meetings can potentially be, those of us who work long hours, such as myself, won't have to wait for one, two, three, four hours to speak for three minutes. As a 26-year veteran in these proceedings, I can recall speaking way back during the Moore administration where Kenny and I had to sit, we sat here sometimes for four hours and would speak at 11 o'clock at night. So for those of you old timers like Chuck and the rest of us that go back that far. So that's a suggestion. Secondly, just over the last two weeks, I've lost two friends to cancer. One was an outstanding teacher who works with me at Harper Woods Middle School. The other, a lifelong friend, who we memorialize Saturday. As Kenny Anderson has stated in many past speeches, articles, and actions, health issues in Pontiac, especially for African-Americans, is a critical issue that must be a mandate for this city council. Perhaps a specific committee could be established here at City Hall specifically dedicated to health, perhaps comprised of health professionals, nutritionists, et cetera. Lastly, good leadership is driven by three things. Data, implementation, and collaboration. Opinions are one thing, but actions must be data-driven. Once data is collected, good leaders find ways to implement action based on the data. I urge you all to use accurate data to drive your decisions and not the flimsy and often whimsical, and yes, often inaccurate, modality of emotion or fad, which has occurred in here for many, many years. Do not abandon data or fact just because you find it someplace that you thought it should not be. And then let the chips fall where they may.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny Anderson.
Good evening, and the struggle for Black Democratic human rights continues. The topic of my address this evening is white racist backlash and voting rights. I begin my comments this evening in remembrance and recognition of the great Black social reformer, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. As a radical social reformer, Dr. King, in leading the civil rights struggle for 13 years, concluded that the majority of whites in America did not want to radically reform institutional racism. That included white moderates, liberals. For King, white moderates will show temporary support, but were not committed to long-term struggle against racial oppression. Yes, this temporary white liberal support is obvious right now. You don't see white liberal Democrats like Nancy Pelosi and many others wearing Black Lives Matter face masks and kente cloth anymore. They don't even mention creating policies to address Black Lives Matters protest agenda. The George Floyd police reform has been put on the shelf while Black voting rights are being rolled back all over the country through voter suppression. Critical race theory, the accurate history that exposes and corrects the white supremacy narrative in America is being attacked through removal and censorship. So the big white lie interpretation of America is official and foremost. Indeed, currently, there is a racist white backlash movement to counter Black voting rights. I want to say this about Black voting rights and Black elected officials. Let me say this. The Black voting rights struggle was specifically about getting blacks elected politically to represent and address Black issues and interests that were historically neglected by white politicians who were both Democrats and Republicans. Black folks who struggled against vicious white racism in the South to get the right to vote, those that prayed in, that sat in, that laid in, that walked, marched, ran, those who were jailed, spit on, hit, kicked, stabbed, waterholed, bit by dogs, trampled by horses, ran over by cars, lynched, bombed, and murdered, expected Black elected officials to the utmost to address racism and their pains, their socioeconomic hardships. Since the Voting Rights Act of 1965, 57 years ago, there have been thousands and thousands of Black elected officials, but most have not put Black Lives Matter as a political priority. They betrayed it. They've been self-serving. To the Blacks on Pontiac City Council here, where y'all, where do y'all stand on Black Lives Matter? We'll see, and time will tell. The struggle continues.
Thank you, sir. Melissa Sperning and Erin Gaskin?
Good evening. My name is Melissa Musa Sfering. This is Erin Gaskin, and we are the managers of Oak Hill and Ottawa Park Cemeteries, which are owned by the City of Pontiac. So you might have seen my face before. I've introduced myself to a couple of you, but I'd really like to become friends with every one of you because the cemeteries are in need. It's not a secret.
No, not at all. We've been actively working down there for the last four years through Covenant Cemetery, also working with the City of Pontiac to not only improve the conditions, but also to improve the relations with the public, to educate them, to give them the history, the heritage, to uphold the integrity of historical Oak Hill Cemetery as well as Ottawa Park Cemetery.
Correct. DPW, they are amazing. We work very well with them, hand in hand, Al Fuly and his whole team. Oak Hill's going to turn 200 in June. We'd really love to have a huge celebration. This is big, especially for the Historical Society, Mike, along with everybody else. It's going to be a great thing for the city to come together and celebrate this place. I know my team, Erin does the sales mostly, but my team, the grounds and everybody, have been working around the clock all summer long to make Oak Hill look amazing. I hope the citizens of Pontiac have noticed that we're really taking pride over there. We want the grass to look great. We are in hopes that MDOT will be able to help get a safety barrier off of, off of university to prevent any more damage in regards to car accidents and stuff like that.
And just on top of that, if you've been in the community the last few years as far as being down at Oak Hill Cemetery, I'm sure you've seen more physical presence down. We hope to continue and expand upon this, not only this year, but in the coming years. We're hopeful to get someone down there full-time to answer questions, concerns. I'm sure, like I said, I'm sure you've seen a lot of the work that we've done as far as getting it cleaned up, removing debris, getting headstones back in place. Just general answering with questions.
I am local in the Waterford area, so I'm going to say it again. If you guys see me at the grocery store, you see me out and about, don't hesitate to stop me. Oak Hill and Ottawa Park are kind of my identity, I guess. I'm there at 7:00 a.m., and here I am at 8:00 p.m., still advocating for them. So if anybody sees me out and about, please don't hesitate. Let me know if there's something I can do, or if you need help finding a loved one, or however we can be assistance.
And I am not a resident of Pontiac, however, working with a lot of these families, they have welcomed me with open arms. And I mean, I, again, like you said, this is part of your identity. This has absolutely helped me find my own identity, just from the warmth of the city. So thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark and then Lynda Watson on deck.
Good afternoon. I'm here as a resident at the Speaker at this time. I have three things I wanted to talk, I kind of wanted one. But the first question is, it's a basic question. We need clarity as the citizens of Pontiac. The last mayor, in a few of her statements, especially her closing, she said there was exactly $71 million in the general fund for budget. Is there any way that can be cleared up as to what is actually in the budget so the people can know about what has to be worked on without having the mass confusion? Number one. And number two, I do have recycle. I have had recycle, and I paid for it. I had it for seven years. I pay for extra trash can, $52 a year. For recycling, I pay $8 a week. It started out as $2, and every year it goes up without notice. Concerned, my last statement is concerning Chuck. When he said he has a piece of paper in his hand, number 21, this conversation, God, my heart goes out to the people. It really does, to anybody who lose their lives over something that's so minute that didn't have to happen. Please understand this. Mike Wilson, and I'm not picking on anyone, I'm giving you facts. We have 1,174 sex offenders between We have 1,174 sex offenders between Birmingham, Auburn Hills, and Waterford. Out of that 1,74, 74, 900 of them are in the city of Pontiac. In the city of Pontiac, the transitional law says that if you have six people, then you have to register with, with Mike Wilson as a transitional home. 54321 is considered rental property. That is why this has been going on for well over 10 years. They are in our neighborhoods. They are not being inspected, and they are getting away with. That was an issue that every resident in the city of Pontiac have. This has been pleaded with the city of Pontiac to look into it, and nothing has ever been done. I can call out landlords' names, in-state, out-of-state, in a city, and still, they laugh at what's going on. So if this administration is gonna make a difference for our children, so they can get up in the mornings at 7:00 and catch those buses in the middle of night and come home at night, if you guys are gonna do something for the city of Pontiac, please put more restriction, put more staff there so they can look into the matter, so this will not have to happen again.
Well, I actually came down to talk about the retiree, but I'm gonna wait to hear what the mayor has to say. I'm glad to meet all of you. I'm hopeful for the future. I don't want my daughter calling me to tell me we're on the news anymore, 'cause they seem to know more about our city than us that live here. I'm gonna piggyback on Mr. Johnson's comment. It is frustrating to have to wait till the end of a meeting to make your voice heard about different issues. So I'm hopeful that the address on the agenda will allow us to be able to give you our opinion before you make a decision which affects all of us. The thing I thought about talking on after the retirees is the rental registration. Neighborhood is being taken over by investors. So I have to piggyback on Darlene's comments. The rental registration is laughable. Hopefully, that'll change. I have a house, which is for my children, 'cause they cannot live with me, but I have to register that as a rental. Now, the inspection, you pay $100 for the inspection, and then you're supposed to send them pictures. How is that determining the house's safety? It's not. You need to go inside the house to see if everything is working properly. Showing pictures could be fraudulent. It doesn't make sense for you to handle an inspection in that way. So, and it does concern me, I live in the same district as Darlene, and we're very active. The number of sex offenders and the number of rental properties is astounding now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marcus Bowman and Ann Tracee Cardwell on deck.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be back. I've been gone for a while, been absent in the physical, but I've been here in the spirit watching you guys, so I just wanna say congratulations to the whole council, Honorable Mayor, our new president, Pro Tem. I'm very, very, very excited for what we can do in the future, but it's unfortunate that I'm up here, and I probably sound like a broken record like everybody else. I'm here for a complaint for some residents over at Manor Court. I left, I wanna say, a few months ago. We had did some work over at Manor Court to kinda help the residents out. They have been complaining about inhabitable conditions for over a year. A multitude of these residents are already on Section 8. Now they're, one of the families is pretty much being evicted just due to the fact that they made complaints, and the landlord, which again, another negligent landlord in our city, which we need to crack down on that through court enforcement, so I'm hoping that the new administration beef that up, but they're claiming that these residents damaged the property, which one of the units was condemned due to a plumbing issue. So that where, that's where most of the damage came from outside of structural. By and large, the property manager was very negligent on having adequate amount of property management and property maintenance, and that's what caused the downfall of that property. But for him to blame the residents, or him to put the residents at jeopardy with their Section 8 and with their vouchers trying to move forward, is just wrong. It's deplorable, and me being an advocate for this community, I would not stand for it, I would not allow it to happen, so I'm asking you all as council members, because I don't believe in districts, I believe in one Pontiac, that you step in, help in any form or fashion that you can to facilitate them not being kicked out, and make sure that they have adequate time, adequate opportunity to find housing, because this is just wrong, and we shouldn't allow this to happen to our residents. No resident in the city of Pontiac should have to live the way some of these people have been living, and they've been paying their rent, and they've been paying their Section 8 vouchers. Now, I have pictures, I have paperwork and documents that I have presented to some of the council members, just so the public can be aware that they are working on the back end, but I have to make the public aware that no one in Pontiac should have to live like this. No one in Oakland County should have to live like this. So I urge you all to take action on this. I know you probably already have a plan in effect. I'm just here as an advocate to support and to put a lot of positive energy in the atmosphere on behalf of this family, and I just ask that the residents, if you have any resources or if you have time to stop by Manor Court to take a look for yourself, that would be helpful, because these people need help, and they've been screaming and crying for a long time for help and haven't been getting any. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Ann Tracee. I've been living here for eight years. The landlord is constantly keeps switching over who the landlord is. The last people that was the landlord was at the housing commission, was Gladys Nelson. Again, they switched the landlord again, so like, Section 8 never got a verification of who is the owner, and so that they can repair the repairs that need to be done. I have six kids. I just don't wanna be outside. It's cold, I'm currently working. It's just a lot going on. The basement backed up because they've been digging in the backyard because the P and Boo Boo was going outside, so they had to dig up a whole lot, so when they digging up, I don't know what they doing back there, but they made the basement back up again, so I tried to reach out to the landlord, and it's like, he hangs up on me like he don't want nothing to even do with me, you know what I'm saying? And it's like, I didn't do anything wrong, you know what I'm saying? Y'all did, complied with Section 8, so now I'm to the point that me and my six kids is just about to be out here in the streets. I don't have nowhere to go. They, I applied for somewhere to go. They told them that I did damage to the apartment, which is a story, and then when I went to court Friday, they told them that, I'm sorry, that I'm constantly putting stuff in the toilet that doesn't go in the toilet, which makes no sense to me. We been going through that issue over there for a while, you know what I'm saying? They come in, move the trash can, snake it out or whatnot. It'll go down for a minute, next couple of days, it's right back to where it's at. They then snaked it from the basement in the inside. It was a lot of stuff that came out of the drainage, but all of our plumbing lines are connected, so they, you can't just say it's my house, you know what I'm saying? Because all our lines are connected. I'm just looking for some type of assistance, some type of help for me and my kids, so that we don't be homeless out here in the street. I appreciate anything that y'all can do to help me and my kids. Again, like I said, the landlord's been doing it for years with the runaround of who is the owner, and I done had meetings here, but like I said, I'm not getting anywhere. So I chose to try to step in here, maybe I can get some type of assistance now. I do have to be out of there on the 31st, so all I can do is just keep working, and kids are on virtual school right now, so like I said, I'm kinda custodian at Pontiac School Districts right now. I just moved up to the supervisor position. Like I said, it's a lot going on in my life, and I just need a little bit of assistance with housing. If I have to go about paying for it on my own, I will, and just say, say, I don't need Section 8 anymore, but I do because I have six kids, you know what I'm saying? Anything can happen along the way. I just wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and say what I have to say.
All right, thank you. Pastor Matlock and then Sonya May on deck.
Well, good evening, belated. I know it's January the 18th, but I wanna congratulate our council, new council for the city of Pontiac. I wanna congratulate our president, Mike McGinnis. I wanna congratulate the mayor, been a part of Oakland County, went to the state, and now the mayor of Pontiac, and I take great hope in this council and in this mayor, turning this city around for good. I believe there's good days for Pontiac like never before, and I believe in this council and I believe in this mayor, that they have the ability to turn things around, and we will see new days for Pontiac, Michigan, for I believe in this city, we are going to do better. I believe in the council and the mayor, working together for the good of the citizens of Pontiac. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sonya May, and then James Sebisch on deck.
Hello, everyone. I just actually wanted to come to say hello, and I congratulate all of you, you new members of the council. It's excellent. I'm like, wow, the council had a whole turnover, so y'all know what that's about, what we bout to do. So let's do this, and I congratulate you all. I actually supported Melanie. I'm a member. I live in District 1, and so I want you all to be looking out for Coffee and Conversations February the 12th, and we'll give you all more information. So anybody that lives in District 1 that has questions, come on out for Coffee Conversation. We welcome you all. Good evening.
Thank you. No, no, no.
Mr. Chuck, I did say we'll give you all more information, but it's actually gonna be downtown here at the Alley Cat Bays. All right.
James Sebisch?
Sebisch.
And then Brenda Cozy Mitchell on deck.
James Sebisch here. Veronica Taylor, who had a total accident on Perry, has removed her nest, had her neck brace removed and a leg brace removed. She's been in therapy. She said she would be here today, but she went to a chiropractor before, so apparently she wasn't feeling up to it. She would appreciate your prayers. I disagree with the gentleman who said that the speaking process should be moved to the front. I think it's more deserving to allow the people who come here to get an education from this council's activity. I think it's more important, if you don't have the time, then don't come. I will quote Proverbs 4:7. But before that, hindsight is a tremendous advantage and sometimes a burden. What could I have done different after the fact, whether it's a fire or a loss of a You'll have to answer it for yourself. Proverbs 4:7. Wisdom is the prime thing. Acquire wisdom, and with all that you acquire, acquire understanding. Are you patient? If you're gonna be a Pontiac resident, you gotta be patient and believe. Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Brenda Cozy Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a new day in Pontiac. I'm excited. How many of you are excited? I've been out of town, I missed a lot of activities. I missed the swearing-in, the inauguration, and the going-away party of the two board members, and now they sit here, Mike McGinnis is the president, Mr. Carrington, William Carrington, president, Pro Tem, and I wanna congratulate the mayor afterwards. But I want you to know, I feel real good knowing that this council is in the hands of these two gentlemen. They have integrity. They are people that work, that put their hands to the plow and get the job done. So I can only speak from experience. I just retired from the city November the 1st, but as each person there, Mike and William, were presidents of the board, and I worked with them, and they always showed up, always did what they were supposed to do. So I feel good about it. Now, I know right now, they said it's a honeymoon going on with all the city council people, but let us remember that while we're here, I've worked for many, many years to try to better Pontiac. A lot of administrations, we failed, but we're counting on you to get the job done. And we talk about scripture, Reverend, I just said something, Psalm 75 talks about where promotion comes from. It doesn't come from the east, help me Reverend Parker, the west, south. Promotion comes from God. So you're here to serve the people, and I believe you're gonna do a good job. I've been knowing Melanie since she was a little girl, so, you know, I had to put the whip on her a little bit, but she's, she's surprising me, and I'm happy about that. Tim Grimal, I had an opportunity to work with Tim over many, many years, and I supported him as the mayor, because I feel that he has the heart for the people. So I just wanna applaud everybody in Kefani, the new deputy mayor. I'm a little old, you probably don't remember me, you probably remember me, right? But I just want you all to say that there's a lot of work to do in Pontiac. Bickering, fighting, it's not gonna get the job done for us. So let us work collaboratively. Reverend Matlock, he's been praying for years. I thought about this morning, I got a little time, I was on my way to a prayer meeting, I got hit by a car at the light. and I got hit by a car at the light, the Reverend was having on top of the Phoenix Plaza. And I said, I was thinking about you Reverend, and I said, God has answered your prayers. I feel that this is God's prayers. Our prayers to God answered, you being here, don't let us down.
Thank you. President McGinnis, that now concludes public comment. I could thank everyone that came out tonight and spoke, uh, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much. We now proceed with closing comments. Mayor Tim Grimal, you have the floor, seven minutes.
Wanted to just try to, try to answer some of the questions that were posed this evening. I'll, I'll start with the important matter that Mr. Bowman brought up. I appreciated your comments, Mr. Bowman, and those of, of the aggrieved tenant as well. Uh, I have been in touch with Councilman Mikhail Goodman over this past weekend. He brought to my attention, I think it was Saturday, uh, don't quote me on the day, but uh, over the weekend, he uh, brought to my attention, uh, the concern that you highlighted this evening. Uh, I know that uh, you're going to give us some additional information, I believe, on the eviction orders that were entered by the court, so I look forward to obtaining that information from you and continuing the dialogue with you. Obviously, we take this kind of situation very, very seriously, um, and, you know, we're, we're a little, uh, we're, we're getting some of this information a little late, since it sounds like a court already, uh, entered an order of eviction, uh, but we're eager to follow up and to do whatever we can to, to help the tenants who, uh, are losing their homes. Uh, so I look forward to having continued dialogue with you about that. Uh, to Mr. Johnson, and to Ms. Clark, and Ms. Watson, uh, as I said earlier during this meeting, I take the lack of adequate code enforcement under previous administrations very, very seriously. We've already been doing a deep dive into that even before this tragic fire, early yesterday morning. Uh, we are well aware of the need to improve code enforcement particularly, but not exclusively when it comes to halfway houses and other abuses about putting too many people into units. Uh, we understand that we need some additional ordinances and regulations. As I noted, the emergency manager eliminated the regulations and ordinance around transient housing. We need to put regulations back in place around that. Uh, but we also understand that we need to improve the work of code enforcement here at City Hall, and that probably includes hiring some additional personnel so that we can better enforce those things. So, as I said earlier during this meeting, I take all of that very, very seriously. We had already been having serious conversations in my first two weeks of office, today is the two-week mark. Uh, obviously, this underscores the urgency of that and the need for real improvement. So I take that very, very seriously. Uh, Ms. Clark, I also wanted to, to speak to your question, uh, about, uh, the financial picture here in the city. I believe what, uh, former Mayor Waterman was referring to, and she referenced that seventy-one million dollar figure, was the amount of money in all funds, uh, here at the city. That includes a number of restricted funds and committed funds. Some of those restricted funds include water and sewer, for example, it can only be used for those dedicated purposes. Uh, the actual amount of money in the unrestricted general fund balance of the city is approximately eighteen million dollars. Uh, in addition, uh, there's the roughly seventeen to eighteen million dollars that has come in the form of ARPA dollars from the federal government, the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, we'll be getting another installment of that, uh, almost an additional twenty million dollars, uh, in the coming months. Uh, so, uh, while that seventy-one million dollar figure, I think, is technically accurate, if you look at all funds, including the water and sewer fund and other restricted funds, a lot of those are, are specifically for certain purposes, and are raised specifically from certain fees, like water and sewer fees, for example. So the, the more accurate number is, the more relevant number, is the eighteen million dollars in unrestricted general fund balance, uh, to answer your question. I also wanted to, uh, share some important and good news. Uh, Ms. Watson and I attended the Viva Trust Fund meeting this past week. Uh, the Viva is the entity that will be funding and administering retiree healthcare, and we all voted, along with Deputy Mayor Stevens, who was also there, we all voted to finally reinstate healthcare for our retirees, starting February 1st. So that's long overdue, and I'm really, really excited to make that announcement. As all of you, I'm sure, know or, or remember perhaps, the emergency manager ended retiree healthcare for city retirees, despite them working, based in large part on that promise for retiree healthcare. Uh, the emergency managers ended retiree healthcare over ten years ago, so this has been a very long time coming, and I'm glad that we were finally able to get that done. And within the next two weeks, we'll see that healthcare reinstated. Uh, retirees will be getting notice of that shortly. Uh, I also want to mention that retirees have the option, if they have another source of healthcare, or otherwise don't want to participate in the retiree healthcare program, they do have the option of opting out of it, and they will get paid twenty thousand dollars if they opt out of the retiree healthcare. Uh, but, this is important, they need to opt out before they start receiving retiree healthcare. So for those of you who are retirees, or those who know retirees, if people want to opt out of the retiree healthcare, and want to instead opt for that twenty thousand dollars, they need to make that election and that determination before they start receiving retiree healthcare benefits. And for those who are age-eligible, those retiree healthcare benefits will start being reinstated in, on February 1st, so that election to opt out needs to happen soon. I also want to emphasize that we are taking applications for boards and commissions and other appointments that I, as mayor, have the ability to make. Uh, I encourage all of you to, uh, apply online, or otherwise drop off applications to my office. If you need help doing that, please call my office, and we'll walk you through that process. Uh, and then I also want to announce that, uh, as you may know, the Pyrec Youth Recreation Center down on Gulf Drive has been fairly controversial, based on its relatively remote location, and based on the fact that the previous city council, uh, did not approve our continuing presence there, or lease of that premises. Uh, we have ended our lease there. Uh, we gave notice to the landlord today that we will be vacating that premises by the end of January. Uh, we will no longer be continuing in a month-to-month lease there. We will be establishing some alternative arrangements on an interim basis, utilizing both the United Wholesale Mortgage Facility, uh, as well as probably at least one other facility here in Pontiac. We'll be making that announcement soon. Uh, and those places will be in use pending our putting together a comprehensive youth recreation plan to bring before council, and we'll be doing that within the next, uh, few months. Uh, finally, I appreciate your comments, uh, former county commissioner Brenda Cozy Mitchell, uh, and I will tell you emphatically that I take this responsibility very seriously, and I will not let you down. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Doyle, closing comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and just to follow up what you were talking about earlier about agenda address, um, the process has been truly underutilized, so in an effort to improve that, there will be two clipboards on the podium, starting, um, next week, Tuesday. So where if, um, the community wants to speak on an agenda item, they can sign the agenda address form and list the item number that they want to speak on, and that happens at the beginning of the agenda, and then public comment can be reserved for announcements, sharing of information about non-agenda items. Thank you.
We now are at city council members' closing comments, in no particular order, we're going chronologically. Number one, the Honorable Melanie Rutherford, Councilwoman, you have the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna try this again, good evening. There we go. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort, but where he stands in the time, in the challenge and counter controversy. In Pontiac, there's always gonna be controversy, and we have to stand when nobody else stands for us. We have to be the voice for the voiceless, we have to say the things that make us uncomfortable, we have to piss people off, because at the end of the day, that's the only thing that's gonna get it done. I say this because there are moments, when I used to sit on this side, and I would watch people say comments, and they wanted a cheap thrill, or a cheap emotion, or a, or a moment, instead of making it a movement. If you want to see the change in Pontiac, you have to be the movement, and stop being the moment. If you want to see the change in Pontiac, you have to be unabashedly, unapologetically dope, as I always say. Because at the end of the day, we have children that are watching us, and you may not like the delivery of what I say, but I always keep it real, because at the end of the day, we have people that are about to be homeless, and I want to know to the landowners that are in this audience, what are you going to do about it? Because crying ain't enough. We have to be the changemakers. Some of us know somebody right now that could have helped that family. Are you going to move? It can't just be us, we have to do it as a collective unit. I say this because I'm a renter, I say this because I'm a single mother, I say this because none of this was about my closing comments, but I am enraged that a family of six may be homeless this week. I am enraged, because I come from a family of thirteen, and I know what homelessness feels like. So if you have the, if you have the resources, if you have the time, if you have the compassion in your heart, do something, or don't just talk about it, be about it. Lastly, I want to thank Crestwood and Astrowood Estates for welcoming, welcoming me as a city council member. I felt so empowered that I'd put my money where my mouth is, and I joined them and paid my dues, I can say what I want to say, okay? Uh, I want to thank the CDC, because I think that if we get past our emotional movement, moments, we can make emotional movements. I bid you goodnight, thank you.
Thank you, closing comments, Councilmember Brett Nicholson.
Good evening, uh, thank you all, uh, for attending. I want to report that it's been another week where the mayor's administration has answered every single one of my constituent issues on the first call, uh, and completely resolved. Um, so, the, I just want to give you that, 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 um, strength to know that, that this truly, um, is a, a great partnership, and I feel very supported. I hope that you will too, and if you have those concerns, please do continue to bring them to me. Our District Two advisory, uh, meeting is coming up on January 24th at 7:00 PM at Goldner Walsh Nursery. Um, and our Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, there's been a lot of questions about city finances, you have the opportunity, uh, to attend, those meetings are open to the public and will be posted. I'm the chair of the Finance and Personnel Committee, uh, we are, our first meeting is on February 10th at 10:00 AM. Uh, during that meeting, we will hear from the deputy mayor, as well as the HR director, about personnel matters, as well as the, uh, city's fin, the state of the city's finances. We meet in the legislative conference room. Um, I, I want to echo boards and commissions, um, you, those, that do reach out to me, uh, it's not that I don't, or I'm not interested because, in resolving your matter, because my first question is always, uh, how would you like to be involved? Um, I want to help together. Um, so if someone comes and has a question or a concern, I'm gonna, uh, address that question or concern, but I'm going to invite you to be part of that committee, part of that task force, part of that board, part of the solution. Um, and not everybody has the time, or, to commit to that, and I understand that, but it will not go unasked. Want to give a notice, uh, because I've seen some, uh, concern about, um, uh, my colleagues, uh, uh, wearing a head wrap. This will happen. We have diversity in this city. Uh, I am having surgery next week, uh, so you will see me wearing a hat. Um, and it might be for a couple of weeks, so if that's a problem, let me know, I'll show you my scars. If this is a problem, let me know, I'll explain, um, that religion to you, or that practice, or that culture, that piece of diversity. Um, I celebrate this, um, and I hope you will join me in celebrating that as well.
Thank you. Hailing from District Three, the Honorable Mikhail Goodman, Councilwoman, you have the floor.
Typically, before, uh, my closing comments, I try to organize my thoughts as much as possible. And that was extremely difficult to do, hearing everything that's happened today, specifically surrounding the issue in which I know many people on council who know me, know that I ran almost my entire campaign on addressing housing, negligent landlords, slum lords, and all the issues happening in our city surrounding the housing that people will need to survive. And, uh, to echo what Melanie said, it, it, I'm enraged, um, to, to put it the best way. There is no reason why any resident should be, uh, dead or homeless solely because of the, uh, personal financial benefit of any one person. Um, and the fact that we have people who are now dead due to corners that may have been cut, or people who may now be, uh, evicted for whatever reason, that doesn't exactly sound a, a good reason to put someone out in the middle of winter. This is an example of the problems that we face, um, that need to be addressed, and they need to be addressed ASAP. That way, things like this are impossible to happen in the city of Pontiac, because this is a problem. We shouldn't have to come to city council meetings and explain, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be out of place next week, hey, the house next to me burned down because of so-and-so and blank and blank. There is no reason why that should happen. So I will be working personally to help address that, and I will, uh, be with a couple of my colleagues at Maynard Court, uh, this coming up week, to look at some of what's happening. Outside of that, um, first of all, I want to say, to answer a couple, uh, comments earlier, uh, I will be one of the people who will happily say, uh, Black Lives Matter in, at, in this, uh, space. I knocked doors in my district, wearing shirts that echoed the messages of Dr. Angela Davis and Fred Hampton. I've had doors slammed in my face. So when I say I'm up here to do the work when it comes to protecting the most downtrodden of us, especially when, again, like, we talk about housing today, that is a priority for me when I sit, uh, at this desk, at this dais, when I sit in my council office, when I knock and talk to people throughout my district, because this is the work that has to be done, because if we don't do it, people will continue to suffer. And I cannot say in good conscience that I've done my job, if I don't do everything I can to make sure that I do everything in my possibility to make sure the people of Pontiac are looked after and protected by its government, especially in the capacity that I am capable of doing from this dais. Um, so I did want to put that out there. And, uh, last but not least, as a person of color, who has long, natural hair, this head wrap is solely for the fact of I am a person of color who has the ability to, uh, wear what I choose, and I happen to choose a, a head wrap made by a black-owned company to make it easier for me to operate throughout the day. So, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Hailing from District Four, the Honorable Kathleen James, Councilwoman, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just want to say that, um, uh, Mikhail and I, when we heard the news about the fire incident, we were both, uh, we both received, I didn't realize that he had received it, but I assumed, because I got the, uh, information about it, that it was District Four. It was actually, it is actually, uh, St. Clair Street is actually in District Three. But we have worked together, uh, on that problem. I was out there, uh, on, on Monday, and, uh, I would like to say that I believe we have a little bit of problem when it comes to emergency, real emergency situations in this city. I am one that always assumed, you know, that we had personnel, and we had processes in place to handle these things. But what I found out on Monday is that we really don't. I saw men standing around in the cold, who had had to jump off of two floors to survive, and there was no services there for those men. They had nowhere to go. And if the news crews could be there, and their processes were working, where was the services to these people? I, I still feel that we've got a concern. Pontiac needs its own Red Cross emergency resources. We need, you know, we're big enough, we're over sixty thousand people, we need our own Red Cross emergency services that can be made available when people suffer this kind of devastation. Uh, we, we didn't look very good on Monday. We still have a lot of people in need. Most of those, uh, all of those people were, are people in transition, trying to get their lives together, uh, and we could, we could do better. There's still a lot of need out there. Uh, the, the, uh, Lighthouse is going to be coordinating support for those people. But those of you, you know, we talk about, and I can appreciate everybody's comments, but we talk about, you know- but we talk about, you know, you guys are looking to us, but we are also looking to this city to stand up and let's do something, let's everybody do their own part. We've got, we've got retirees out here who have time that you can get involved in working with organizations like Red Cross and trying to put together plans so that when things like this happen in Pontiac, there are resources that are there on the spot when that is going on. So I hope that we can move toward putting together real emergency services for Pontiac residents.
I'm sorry to say that concludes your time.
Sorry. That was the most important thing that I had to say.
Hailing from District 5, the Honorable Councilman William Parker Jr., you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, about to say New Springfield. Good afternoon, Pontiac. It's always good to see each and every one of you here to discuss the business of the city. As you have heard me say from day one, I believe in the power of "we," because ideas need legs. If you don't put some legs and some action behind your ideals, all you're doing is talking. It's good to bring ideas to people, and some people can help you motivate it, but if you're willing to put forth the engine and effort, then we can move this city. We can get some things taken care of. My heart goes out to those who lost their lives in the fire earlier this week. Certainly, there should be some things that the religious community can do to help in that process, and I'll be reaching out to those of which I'm a member of to see what we can do to help in that process. But we should, at this point, what I've heard everybody say since I've stood at this desk is we need to come together and be unified, have the same goals, the same visions, to make sure that we get things that need to be accomplished, accomplished in this city. I commend this council for moving so quickly on some of the things that they have moved on, so that you say that we are trying to get some of the things that was not taken care of, taken care of, so we can move this city forward. To that end, last week, they listed the number of subcommittees, and I wanted to tell you that I was appointed to the Law and Court Subcommittee. The other two council members that are serving with me on that committee is Councilman Nicholson and Councilman Rutherford. We will be meeting on January 31st with Chief Judge Walker to discuss the issues with the courts and some of the other things that we get to discuss. But we all, each and every one of us sitting here, needs the support of each and every one of you. As I listen to some of the comments, I think our heart always goes out to some of the needs of the people in this city. We know there's a lot of things that have gone neglected. We know there's a lot of things that can't be done. And so as we move forward, we're going to need you to continue to tell us the areas that we may be missing, some of the areas that we didn't see, because we was concentrating in another spot. We don't see everything, but with your eyes, we can see what's going on, and we could help. That's my comment. Be blessed. Good night, Pontiac.
Thank you. With that, he's yielded to Councilwoman James, so she can finish her comments with the remaining moments. Voila. You have the floor, Councilwoman James.
Okay. Well, I have a, I am chairman of the Parks and Rec Committee. Our committee will be meeting this coming Monday, January the 24th, at noon in the Legislative Chambers. If anyone wants to attend, we're going to be dealing with a lot of the park, the concerns that we have in the city, and I'm very excited to hear about the citywide cleanup that's being planned by the Pontiac Collaborative and the City of Pontiac collectively. We can also include the cemeteries as well in that cleanup in April, because the kids, as soon as the weather breaks, the kids start, they hit the parks. And so it's very important for us to get the parks, get those areas cleaned up and appropriate for our children. Also, our District 4 Zoom meeting, our monthly meeting, will be on January the 27th at 6:00. We're going to be sending those Zoom requests or those Zoom notices out. So if I don't have your email address, please text me or call me and give me your email contact information. My phone number is (248) 425-4663. That's (248) 425-4663. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge we have the School Board President, the Honorable Gil Garrett, and School Board Vice President Kenyatta Bowman in the audience.[1422.58][1422.58][applause] For a closing comment, we yield the floor now to the voice, the visionary, the Honorable President Pro Tem, William A. Carrington from District 6.
Now, he had to give me five, five more seconds to answer that, right?[1440.33][1440.33][laughing] Good evening, everyone. I'd like to, first and foremost, offer my condolences to the families that lost one from this tragic fire this weekend, as well as those families that also in the last few months lost family members that passed away. It's a lot that's been put on our hearts tonight. And I know this city is a city that has a lot of resilience, a city that comes together in times of crisis. I've seen that since moving here 12 years ago. And no doubt in my mind that this is continuing to happen for the residents of the city of Pontiac. This past weekend, I'd like to thank the mayor for coming out to the 6th District on Saturday on his time off to hear some concerns about some of the code, maybe some of the code issues in the 6th District. We definitely have to strengthen that particular department, give it what it need, but also hold it accountable for not following up on a lot of these code violations. I also like to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Rutherford, as well as County Commissioner Angie Powell, for bringing a situation concerning a resident in the 6th District, and hopefully we've been able to rectify that particular situation as well. So again, thank you. In closing, there's a lot of positive things tonight, the resolution for the parks. You know, over the years, the parks has been definitely safe spaces for our children, have definitely been something on my heart. I also like to thank Week Care Neighborhood Association, as well as GM Neighborhood Association of Modern Housing, for supporting the parks and cleanups for over a decade in the 6th District. So I'd like to definitely thank those organizations, and that's good night for me.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Thank you for spending your valuable time here with us this evening. Your commitment to moving our city forward is palpable, and we're making progress together and look forward to continuing that collaboration. I also want to celebrate those community stakeholders that made multiple Martin Luther King Day honors and celebrations happen over the last few days. We've heard in recent days news that our United States Representative, who represents Pontiac in Congress, Brenda Lawrence, a dear friend of mine, my mentor, and somebody that I used to work for, has announced her retirement from public service. She will be concluding at the end of this calendar year, so we still get 12 months of excellent service, including her role with the very powerful Appropriations Committee in Congress, AKA that determines where the dollars go. But just want to celebrate. You'll hear more about that in the months to come, but something very important to me personally, but also to this community, is her strong legacy of public service to our region, not just the city of Pontiac. On that note, the federal government, every home in the United States is now eligible to order four free at-home COVID-19 tests through the U.S. Postal Service. That went live today. Those tests are completely free, and orders will usually ship in seven to 12 days. So order your tests now so that you have them when you need them, AKA before supplies are going on. But that's covidtests, with an S at the end, .gov, covidtests.gov. There's also overdose rescue training available through AmeriCorps that's available free to the public. That's happening virtually on January 26th. That childcare scholarship is still available for Oakland County families, up to $1,200. First come, first served, so don't miss out on that if you're eligible Pontiac families. We have an active citizen member, Ms. Sonia Malone, shared with me when I made the announcement last week to make sure that we don't have any Pontiac homeowners lose their, the ownership of their home due to tax foreclosure, that through the ARP funding, a big resource is about to be rolled out, and it's the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund. So that's, they're just sort of finalizing the details, but that'll be a big resource that's available for not just, you know, tax assistance, but sometimes mortgage payments, your condo association fees, your insurance costs. There's a lot that's on the table there that could be available as they try and work to help families through the pandemic. Myself and a number of our colleagues are doing various Michigan Municipal League training in the coming days, so that way we can serve you even stronger, so that we're knowledgeable and well-versed in the complexities in the state of Michigan when it comes to governing our municipalities. And as you'll hear in the coming weeks, this council, through our subcommittees, but individually through our districts, are rolling up our sleeves to see how we can infuse as many resources and policy changes to help our neighborhoods, to help you, the residents, that are the whole purpose for why we're here. So with that, good night. God bless you. I'm out. And of time, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's council meeting? Motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, supported by Councilwoman Rutherford, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing, no discussion, roll call. Mr. Clerk. Yes? Yes. Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
That motion carries. We now stand adjourned at 8:59 p.m., seconds away before 9:00.[1785.71][1785.71][applause]
Ms. Clark.
[inaudible].